Falmouth Community Television's Coverage of Town Meeting is sponsored by the following corporate underwriters.
Greetings from the new simply hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes.
We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure.
Start your path for better hearing and better life.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple: to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And, we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303, or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business. 877-634-2638, or meganet.net.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors.
The attorneys at Oppenheimer-Nicherson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has on our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto, as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At A&amp;A Paving, we believe in providing customers with quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. A&amp;A Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calphi Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calphi cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601, and online at calphinesurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road, and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street Downtown Falmouth.
Eastman's has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase. A local, family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry. Serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations. Grassi Septic Solutions. Whole Health Company LLC. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road. The Annie Hart Cool Team. Dolpe Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning. Village Lamp and Repair Shop. Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum. FriendsOfNobbska.org. Lisa Peterson Azendorf. Kinlan Grover Real Estate. The Falmouth EDIC. FalmouthEDIC.org. Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions. 781-930-5000. Sora's Flower Garden Nursery. M. Duffney Builders. Danny's Barber Shop. Carl F. Cabosa Excavating. Paul's Precision Automotive Repair. David Rogers Electric. Murray &amp; McDonald Insurance. 1-800-800-8990. The Davy Tree Expert Company. Chapman Funerals and Cremations. Hanush Jewelers in Downtown Falmouth. Mahoney's Garden Center. The Cape Cod Five. Martha's Vineyard Savings Bank, in Falmouth and Woods Hole. And Steve's Pizzeria and More. At this time, I'll recognize the new Chair of the Select Board, Doug Brown, for our invocation.
Heavenly Father, may our meeting this evening be not only an exercise of care and concern for our community and its residents, but also an example of how a community can agree and disagree and still be a community. We ask that you watch over and protect our families, our community, our nation, and our world. May your gift of peace become a reality for all. Amen.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of those who have passed since our last meeting. Colors Post. Ladies and gentlemen, the Falmouth Police Department Honor Guard, and Officer Melissa Martin on the National Anthem. At this time, I'll recognize the Town Clerk for the swearing-in of new town meeting members.
Will the following town meeting members please stand? Weatherly Bernard Doris, Peter Clock, Annie Dean, Judith Fenwick, Douglas Jones, Victoria Lowell, Catherine O'Brien Bumpus, Eric Turkington, Ronald Zweig, Karen Bizinett, Sandra Cooney, Adrian Dufrain, Sandra Freeman Silva, Barbara Cannolopoulos, Judith Magnani, Richard Mar... Adrian Dufresne, Sandra Freeman Silva, Barbara Canolopoulos, Judith Magnani, Richard Merrick, Susan Smith, Benjamin Van Mooney, Jared Goldstone, Nathaniel Estes, Dale Cap, David McDonald, Patricia Morono, Margaret Nicolson, Laura Russo Peterson, Carol Strony, Jeffrey Thomas, Cheryl Williams, Michael McCarthy, Ed Schwartz, Mary Ellen Allwatt, Brian Keefe, Melissa Keith, Helen Kennedy, Christopher Lan, Kelly Pacico Tornado, Deena Pandina, Jennifer Peralt, Linda Toby, Armaud Peterson, James Callahan, Rosemary Carey, David Cheverria, William Dynan, Mary Harris, Charlotte Harris, Charles McCaffery, Peter Nielsen, James Parton, Janet Azaravitz, Patricia Ossman, Robert Antonucci, Martha Asendorf, Jason Cullinan, Michael Duffy, Charles Eastman, Paul Sellers, Douglas Shear, Daniel Shear, Brenda Swain, Penelope Dubey, Thomas Bushy, John Collins, Cheryl Leahy, Sarah Long, Barry Panish, Sarin Patel, Matt Patrick, Mary Swain, Jacob Thompson, Scott Bennett, James Cunningham, Ronald Dwyer, Martha Fish, Mark Mancini, Lynn Rhodes, Ronald Smalowitz, Christine Uldua, Jay Savala, Susan Augusta, Phyllis Day, Michael Holcomb, Javi La May, Joseph Martino, Joseph Neto, Misty Nienmeyer, William Peck, Gina Weber, Dana Huben, Vincent Perez, Adrian Price, and Angelé Scott Price. If you all stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm that I will faithfully and impartially perform all duties incumbent upon me as a town meeting member according to the best of my ability and understanding in agreeable the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the bylaws of the Town of Falmouth. So help me God. Congratulations, thank you.
At this time, I'll recognize the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen for dispensing with the reading of the warrant.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we dispense with the reading of the warrant, except for the officer's return.
You've all heard with the main motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Chair, Mr. Clerk, I ask that the warrant become an official part of the record for this meeting. At this turn, I will read the officer's return of the warrant. By virtue of this warrant, I have this day notified and summon the inhabitants of the Town of Falmouth, qualified to vote on town affairs as said warrant directs, by posting an attested copy thereof in Town Hall and every precinct in the town. Signed, Constable Thomas Zine. At this time, the Chair, no, we don't have the front section. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion for town employees who are not residents of the town the right to speak on any issue before the meeting. So moved, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. At this time, I'll recognize the Planning Board for a notification of public hearings.
Evening. Paul Dwyer, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two, Clerk for the Planning Board. In accordance with Chapter Forty-eight, Section Five, Massachusetts General Law, and Article Forty-three of the Falmouth zoning bylaw, a public hearing was held on February twenty-third, March ninth, and March sixteenth, on Articles Three, Four, Five, Six, and Seven, for the June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one special town meeting, and all those who wish to speak were heard. The hearing for these articles, anticipated to be heard for the April twenty-twenty-one annual town meeting, are valid for six months. Thank you.
Thank you. So this evening, for those members that are not town meeting members that are with us in the stands, if you'd like to speak during the meeting, if you can stand up, and I'll acknowledge when I see you, if my glasses aren't too fogged up from these, from this mask, I'll put you on the list, and then, when I recognize you, one of the microphone carriers will bring a microphone back to your area, back there. For the town meeting members here, we'll have the mic carriers, as well as, there are two stationary mics in the front, and the podium, if you're making a presentation, or you have a PowerPoint, and would like to walk up front when you're recognized, you could do that as well. Okay, we're going to use a blanket vote, so I'm going to read through each of these articles, give a short description of it, call your attention to the recommendation. If you'd like to debate the article, or make an amendment or something, yell "Hold", we'll hold the article. Otherwise, the recommendation will be the official action of the town meeting on the blanket vote. After I read through the warrant once with a description, I'll go through a second time just by number. So Article One as a whole, this is to hear reports. Article Two, to adopt a bylaw to amend the Code of Falmouth by adding the promulgation of regulations. The recommendation is slightly different wording than it was in the article itself, but the recommendation is listed there. Article Three, to amend the zoning bylaw for site plan review. Again, Article Three's main motion is slightly different than what's printed in the article, but it is listed under recommendation. Who's holding this? Article Five, this is to amend the zoning bylaw for site plan review, lapse of decision. The Planning Board's recommendation is as printed. Article Five, to amend the official zoning map, to remove text box footnotes one through eight on the zoning overlay districts, prevention wildlife corridor, and large-scale ground-mounted solar. Recommendation is as printed. Article Six, Article Six is to amend the zoning bylaw. The recommendation of the Planning Board is slightly different than the original article, and it's printed in the warrant. Article Seven, see if the town will vote "Hold". Article Eight, I believe is a "Hold" for a new recommendation of the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Chairman, is that accurate? You all changed it, okay. Article Nine, this is to transfer the sum of three thousand dollars from Certified Free Cash, and to vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain a property easement consisting of a small strip of land at two forty-one Scranton Avenue. I'm going to hold. Article Ten, this is authorizing the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain easements at twenty Village Common Drive. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article Eleven, to authorize the Select Board to purchase or take by eminent domain easements on a parcel at twenty-eight Common Village Drive. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article Twelve, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain easements on a parcel abutting Saint Mark's Road. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article Thirteen, authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain a permanent easement for sewer purposes associated with a proposed tee ticket at Acapescot Sewer Service Area. Recommendation is indefinite postponement. Article Fourteen, vote to accept the provisions of the General Law's Chapter Ninety, Section Eighteen-B, allowing the Board of Selectmen or Traffic Advisory Committee, in the interest of public safety, to establish designated safety zones. The recommendation is as printed. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to replace the holiday Christopher Columbus Day on the second Monday of October with Indigenous Peoples' Day. The recommendation is as printed. I'm going to hold. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will advise the Board of Selectmen to create a domestic partnership bylaw for the town. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Hold. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to institute a townwide policy whereby a statement to respectfully acknowledge that the Town of Falmouth is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Tribe. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Hold. Article Eighteen, to vote to create a Select Board Task Force on Sustainable Living for Falmouth Workforce Families, and to fund a family early education childcare support voucher program. The recommendation is indefinite postponement. Hold. Article Nineteen, this is a CPC article, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from fiscal two thousand and twenty-two Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to rehabilitate Bell Tower Tennis Courts located at One Bell Tower Lane. I'm going to hold. Article Twenty, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of two hundred thousand dollars from fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to purchase a permanent conservation restriction on land now owned by the Three Hundred Committee Land Trust and formerly owned by Florence Sylvia on Millstone Road in North Falmouth. Hold. Article Twenty-One, that the town vote to appropriate or transfer the sum of one million eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, of which five hundred thousand dollars is from the undesignated fund balance, and one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand is from the fiscal twenty-two estimated receipts to the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund. Article Twenty-Two, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars from fiscal two thousand and twenty-two Community Preservation Fund Estimated Revenues to the Community Preservation Budgeted Reserve. Article Twenty-Three, that the town vote to transfer or appropriate the sum of three hundred and thirty-three thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars from fiscal two thousand and twenty-two Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to the Historic Preservation Reserve. Article Twenty-Four, that the town vote to appropriate the sum of three hundred and fourteen thousand forty-five dollars from fiscal two thousand and twenty-two Community Preservation Estimated Revenues to rehabilitate Gov. Fuller Field. Okay, Article One is a "Hold". Article Two. Article Three is a "Hold". Article Four. Article Five. Article Six is a "Hold". Article Seven is a "Hold". Article Eight's a "Hold". Article Nine is a "Hold". Article Ten. Article Eleven. Article Twelve. Article Thirteen. Article Fourteen. Article Fifteen is a "Hold". Article Sixteen is a "Hold". Article Seventeen is a "Hold". Article Eighteen is a "Hold". Article Nineteen's a "Hold". Twenty's a "Hold". Article Twenty-One. Article Twenty-Two. Article Twenty-Three. And Article Twenty-Four. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee, for the main motion on the blanket vote.
Mr. Moderator, I move all articles that have been passed and not held be and hereby adopted as recommended as the official action of the meeting, and that the necessary monies for the same shall be raised and appropriated, or as otherwise specified.
Okay, you've all heard the main motion to approve the blanket. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Mr. Chairman for notification.
Mr. Moderator, I hereby serve notice of reconsideration of all articles passed under the blanket vote.
Okay, notice has been served. Article One, Mr. Chairman, for the main motion.
I move Article One as printed.
As printed, this is to hear reports of committees and officers. We have the Energy Committee.
Good evening. My name is Rosemary Dregger Carey, Precinct Five. I'm pleased to be here tonight to give a report on the current work of the Energy Committee. Our members include Megan Amsler Chair, Alessandro Borconcelli, Matt Patrick, Eleanor Ling, and myself. I'm sorry. Okay. In our role as advisors to the Select Board on Energy Matters, we're committed to supporting energy efficiency and solar development, to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions and reliance on fossil fuels, and positioning our community for greater energy resilience. As you know, in two thousand and twenty, the Town of Falmouth met all of the criteria to apply for Green Communities designation. We received our notice of the official designation as a green community in spring two thousand and twenty-one. The Energy Committee is currently in the process of working with town and school officials to prioritize energy projects that are eligible for green communities funding, and those funding requests will be submitted in July. The proposed projects focus on energy savings primarily in lighting and energy controls. Green Communities grants coupled with utility incentives will help us implement these measures in municipal structures and schools to meet the energy reduction target of twenty percent in five years. During two thousand and twenty-one, the Energy Committee has spent a good deal of time meeting with the solar developer AMP, and attending the Planning and Zoning Board meetings to learn more about the proposed solar farm at the Cape Cod Country Club, the subject of Articles Six and Seven. The Energy Committee supports the passage of Articles Six and Seven with the understanding that certain conditions that AMP has either pledged or been open to discussing will be negotiated and met. We believe these conditions are rational and feasible, and many of them are common practice in the industry. Earlier this month, we sent a letter to the Select Board and Planning Board recommending that, should the two articles pass tonight, the town enter into a memorandum of understanding with AMP. We also wanted to help memorialize the community benefits that AMP has expressed willingness to negotiate. These include planting the area with pollinator species in accordance with the UMass PV Platinum Certification, design and build a portion of the array for community-shared solar to serve low- and moderate-income households, provide funding to build affordable net-zero or carbon-negative housing on the site, implement permaculture practices in the design of the project to manage water runoff and irrigate plantings, apply at least a two-to-one ratio for replenishment of trees that would be clear-cut, use the wood on-site as much as possible, and that a payment be negotiated per kilowatt-hour to be contributed to the town specifically for funding energy-related expenses, such as a position for an Energy Sustainability Director, solar panels on the senior center, and the water treatment facility, as well as fund gaps in green community projects to reach our goal of twenty percent energy reduction in five years. While not in our scope, we also support the additional efforts being made by AMP for water quality studies on Kuna Mesit Pond. We are strong advocates for localizing the tangible benefits of energy projects, and know that additional review is required by the Cape Cod Commission and the Falmouth Planning Board should Articles, should the Articles pass. We're also doing, undertaking community engagement efforts in the Energy Committee. If the town is going to achieve its net-zero emissions goals by two thousand and fifty, as we declared in the climate emergency resolution passed last year at this time, we'll need even more Falmouth homes and businesses to install solar panels, electrify their appliances, and heating and cooling system, and make our next vehicles electric. Our volunteer members have started submitting articles to the Falmouth Enterprise, providing information about these technologies. Future articles will cover such topics as induction stoves, heat pumps for domestic water heating, electric bikes, electric boats, solar-powered travel, and more. We'd love to know what you want to learn about, or if you have an area of expertise. We'd love to know what you want to learn about or if you have an area of expertise, so please send us your ideas. In closing, the Energy Committee is deeply committed to helping the Town of Falmouth in its journey to climate resiliency and net zero emissions, and we welcome your input along the way. Thank you.
Okay, any other committee reports? Hearing none, the question will come on the main motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Have it unanimous. Article three, is that Planning Board article? Can we get you with a microphone, because I can't hear a word you're saying?
Could we please have what's projected on the two screens enlarged so they fill the whole screen for those of us sitting in the back that can't read them? I mean, they only cover part of the, there's a big black area all around it. It would be nice if they made it larger so we could see the whole thing.
Okay, if they can do that, they'll do that. The Planning Board for the main motion on Article three. Who's making motions for the Planning Board? All right, you want to come up to the mic there?
Charlotte Harris, Precinct Five, in the Planning Board. The article is to see if the town will vote to amend zoning bylaw Article 39, site plan review by replacing one section of it. Recommended by the Planning Board.
So the main motion is as recommended. Ms. Fenwick.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct One. At our precinct meeting, a very clever grammarian by the name of Peter Clark pointed out that the meaning of the first sentence could be clarified by asserting after the word "lot", second line, "two family residents on a lot, comma." It then makes sense, what you're trying to do with this sentence. That's not an amendment, I think we could call it maybe a grammarian error?
Could I say that I think it does need correction, but because the "would add 500 square feet" is in fact an essential clause, the "which" should be a "that," a "lot that would add," and then, or "that should," under a parking schedule and so forth. So if you change the "which" to "that," it's grammatically correct.
But the comma after "lot"?
No.
Hmm, okay.
So instead of voting something that's not correct, do you want to just amend the Planning Board's motion to change that one word? Yes? Okay. We have an amendment. The amendment is to change the word "which" to "that." Any discussion? Hearing none, the question will come on the amendment to change the word "which" to "that." All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Any further discussion on the main motion as amended? Hearing none, the question will then come on the main motion as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it by a two-thirds majority, and I so declare. Article five, the Planning Board for the main motion. Article six, I'm sorry. What seems to be the breakdown over there with the Planning Board? I need a main motion on the floor.
I'm sorry, I thought the petitioner would be doing that. Article six is as recommended by the Planning Board.
Okay, the main motion is as recommended, and we have a presentation by the petitioner? Yep, Mr. Chair, I'm going to recognize you after we have our presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Brian Jazinski from Precinct Eight, and I've been a resident of Hatchville for 23 years. I'm president of the Coonamessit Pond Association, and we support Articles Six and Seven. Our mission at the CPA is to protect the watershed and help provide stewardship of that conservation parcel. We have, is there a second slide, please? One more. No, okay. Keep going. All right, I'm going to skip this slide. We have strong representation in Hatchville. We have membership at Lockstead, we have membership along Hatchville Road, the Coonamessit Farm, Alchemy Farm, Adamansett, Waterside, Theater Drive, and Boxberry Hill Road. I'm going to cover a few of the community benefits that are outlined in this binding enforceable agreement signed by myself at the CPA and David Freel. We also have a memorandum of understanding, which I've passed around to many of you between AMP and the CPA. The first, for Article Seven, if it's passed, there will be a significant water quality study at the Coonamessit Pond. This will be the largest freshwater pond study ever on Cape Cod. Second, the pond tree line and setbacks will not be touched for this solar project. The pond tree line and setbacks will not be touched. There'll be a small and responsibly-built trail network in and around the pond and on the property. As was already mentioned, the pollinator program, supported by UMass Agriculture. Now, Article Six is important here. This is where it gets interesting. If AMP can clear some trees, I don't think it's that many, and if you look at the trees and you look at the area that's being cleared, it's pretty sparse. It's a golf course. People want to find golf balls in and around these trees. The water quality study will be much stronger in price and in study, and it will also incorporate deep pond. There's permanent conservation. If this article passes, AMP will buy the property and give it to the town. They'll buy the property and they'll give it to the town. Andrew will cover some of the tree removal and restoration on this parcel. Of course, nobody likes to see trees removed, but they have an aggressive replanting component. The Energy Committee mentioned the community solar landscaping. There's some significant landscaping for shielding and setbacks from Abutter's residential property. There's an affordable housing component with septic systems that will do no harm to the pond. That's our mission, that's important to us, is that that pond and the aquifer that we get our drinking water from, y'all got this in the mail, that shows the Falmouth water supply from the Coonamessit well. That's under the Coonamessit Pond, the town water supply. AMP has also agreed to maintain the sledding hills if that article passes, if the town will allow it. So I've been over there many times, as have my kids and some of your kids and grandkids sledding on those hills. Those hills will remain. So I thank you for this brief presentation, and again, I urge you to support these articles. There's a lot of time to make changes, to add things. It needs to go before the Cape Cod Commission, it needs to go before the Planning Board, but it's essential that these articles pass for this project to even make it to the starting
Next slide, please. Hi, everyone. My name is Andrew Chabot. I am Senior Manager with AMP Energy. I apologize, I'm a little hoarse, so I'll make this very brief. Oh, oh. Force habit, sorry about that. So I just wanted to, just to say again, my name is Andrew Chabot. I am a Senior Manager with AMP Energy. I'll keep this brief. I wanted to thank everybody for their input thus far, and to thank especially the Brian and the rest of the Coonamessit Pond Association, the Energy Committee, the Falmouth Water Stewards, everybody who's provided valuable input to this project thus far. And just to put into some context very quickly on why Articles Six and Seven are important for what we would plan to hopefully do on the existing golf course location. So I know it's, you might have to crane your neck a little bit to the left, because north is looking the other way, so we could fit this on the slide, but what we're currently looking at now is solar array on three parcels that comprises the current golf course, the Cape Cod Country Club. Next slide, please. What the arrays will look like, essentially they'll take up a subset of each of these parcels, taking great care to avoid wetlands and the nearby ponds, and maintaining tree setback areas as much as we can possibly do. That doesn't interfere directly with the shading of the systems. Great. And then specifically talking about tree clearing, I know that is a very significant and important topic. We certainly don't take tree clearing lightly at all, so what Article Six allows us to do is while it does allow us to remove additional trees on these parcels, it would be a requirement and up to the, you know, the Planning Board's discretion would enforce two times replanting of any excess trees removed in this manner. So while we'd be required to remove 12 acres of trees, we would be replanting 13 acres of trees and be looking to do more if we were able to procure additional sites nearby that we could offset further the tree offset area. So as you can see on this slide here, the areas in brown are the areas where we'd be seeking to remove some of those trees, and blue would be where we'd be replanting. And primarily, it would be on the parcel on the top in the middle where some of those tree coverage is pretty sparse with no understory. That would enable us to not have, to have a little bit more livelier footprint and less shade. And as Brian mentioned, and speaking with the rest of the community, we've learned that other things that are important as well. So as Brian did mention, you know, we've learned that there are two hills that are used primarily for sledding. Those areas would not be built on, those would be maintained for families moving forward to use for their use, and we would be maintaining the tree line alongside the pond for stormwater mitigation and to support the local environment further. And just to sum up, very humbly, would humbly request for your yes vote on Articles Six and Seven. Doing so does allow us to provide a slightly larger system on the site in question, and that does make it more economic for us to purchase outright the land versus leasing it from the landowner. When we can purchase that land, as Brian has mentioned, we have a binding agreement that we plan to donate that to the town for the town's use after the useful life of the project, in addition to the other benefits that were mentioned. And with that, I will thank everyone for their time, and I'll be around for any questions that might come up. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Is that on? Yes. Jerry Potamus, Precinct Two. Will AMP be doing the water quality studies? And if yes, which may be quicker, will you seek involvement from the Water Stewards, the Water Quality Management Committee, as well as the county? I believe this, if it's freshwater, it's probably phosphorus limited rather than nitrogen
The CPA is actually currently bidding that out right now. We have a few interested parties. The Association to Preserve Cape Cod is one of them that's looking to do it. AMP is providing the money to do it in around $350,000 to $450,000 over the lifespan of the projects.
Who will provide the QA QC for the project? Hopefully, there'll be some town and county expertise involved with that water quality.
Yes, there will be.
Okay, thank you. And the second part of the question, and I think it got lost. What is the net revenue to the town if you lease the property in an expected revenue for the kilowatt hours that you expect to generate? And this might be a two-part versus what the golf course generates for the town currently?
Great. So unfortunately, I don't have the information handy for what the golf course generates for the town, so I apologize for that. If we are able to lease the land versus purchase the land, the main change there is ultimately the size of the system that we're able to build on the location. So if we are purchasing the land, putting a larger system there, there's a more revenue to the town because it is on a, as you mentioned correctly, on a dollar per kilowatt or megawatt basis. That still needs to go into negotiation with the town, but typically, it's in the range of several thousand dollars per megawatt constructed per year for the life of the project, and that would be negotiated with the town on what would be fair at all places.
Okay, next, I have Mr. Neto.
John Neto, Precinct Nine. Dear fellow town meeting members, in my forty-odd years of coming to town meeting, I feel that this is one of the most important articles that I've had to make a decision to vote on. I hold it up, I think, until 1986 when Vicky Lowell presented us, excuse me, with the land bank bill, and this town meeting had the foresight to protect open space in the Town of Falmouth, and we had our land bank bill before the state was even organized. Falmouth was one of the first towns in the Commonwealth to set aside open space. This, these two articles that we have in front of us tonight, which I wholeheartedly support, I would hope you would. The list of why we should vote for this is very, very long. I would like to talk about the effects, not of this zoning immediately on Falmouth, but on the climate change that we are undergoing right now on this planet, not only in Falmouth, Cape Cod, Mass, New England, the United States, but the whole planet. The burning of fossil fuels has been proven undoubtedly to have a negative effect on the future of our planet. For those of you that still do, are hesitant about climate change, our own Falmouth scientist, John Holdren, last week came out with an excellent article debunking the myth that there is no climate change. I feel it's got a little bit of power of history, because I have to ask you, 66 years ago, when I rode my bike to Monarch Beach and went over the wooden bridge, down the road, and took a right, so to speak, and walked all of, walked on road, and took a right, so to speak, and walked all of, walk on the beach, that road that I rode my bike on 66 years ago is underwater. Go to Monarch and see it and stand on the wooden bridge, the water's there. The beach that I sat on is a good 150 feet out in Nantucket Sound. Something is happening, and that is not a good effect. The burning of fossil fuels is what all of us do when we heat our home, when we get in our car tonight to leave this meeting, when we put on the lights, especially if it's generated from a coal plant. So by passing these two articles through the company called AMP, which I've never seen in my lifetime coming to town meeting, where a company comes out and puts in the newspaper twice what they intend to do. When they produce the Zoom meetings, went to our precinct meetings, I think we have to have a level of trust that we can work together with this company, the Coonamasa Pond Association, with 160 members, the neighbors of this project are behind it. So why do we not want to vote for it? As one person told me, "Well, you know, Joe, all that solar energy is very expensive." And I answered, "No, it isn't." And I'll give you some facts on why it isn't. I've had solar on the top of my house, and I've said this before at this meeting since 1970.
Mr. Neto, four minutes has expired.
All right. Well, thank you for your time. There's a lot that hasn't been said, but four minutes is tough.
You can get back on for two more.
Oh, two more?
Get back on my list if you'd like to.
I can't hear you.
You can get back on the list for two more minutes.
Oh.
On the list, which means you have to sit down. I recognize the other speakers, and then you can speak a second time for two minutes. Ms. Lichtenstein? Do you need assistance with that device? Okay.
Leslie Lichtenstein, Precinct Eight. When the town celebrated its tricentennial, we bought the Coonamasa Reservation. I was on the first and the second management teams for the Coonamasa Reservation. Besides surveying it and putting in access trails, we had a land management plan commissioned and done. That plan was accepted by the CONCOM and put into our master plan for the town of Falmouth. One of the strongest points of that plan was we needed to obtain a conservation restriction on the golf course. Unfortunately, we were never able to do that. Now, I only got the memorandum of understanding a couple of hours ago. However, this project will put most of this property under conservation restriction eventually. So it will fulfill what we tried to do for our town's tricentennial. I do, however, have one small reservation that I hope AMP Energy and our Planning Board will address. Two acres of the reservation, of the golf course have been set aside for affordable housing in absolutely the worst possible place in the close to 200 acres we're looking at here. The lot that is designated for this is directly north of the pond. Groundwater in Falmouth flows from north to south. Now, yes, I know we can have denitrifying systems. It also is phosphorus that's a big problem in ponds here. Nitrogen in our saltwater bays, but phosphorus in our freshwater ponds. I'm all for mitigation, but why do something that requires mitigation? You've got almost 200 acres here. You can put that affordable housing on the north side of Boxbury Hill at a point at which it is not directly in the groundwater flow to the pond. Now, I'm hoping that AMP Energy will look at this and the Planning Board will look at this because why ask for problems, folks? I mean, this is a great article, and I hope we pass it tonight because it'll do very good things for the town. However, with this one reservation, we need to make sure that we protect the pond and the town well. Why risk putting units directly in the path? Don't step in front of the truck, folks, if you don't want to get hit. Thank you.
Ms. O'Connell? We got a mic coming to you if you'd like, or?
Maureen O'Connell, Precinct Four. There's so much enthusiasm about renewable energy and around the world, it's a wonderful thing, except I, in many places, and I'd like it not to happen here in Falmouth, there isn't an end plan. Around the world, we have rusting windmills with no plan for how to remove them, who is responsible for renewing them, removing them, who's responsible for disposing of the materials involved. What's the decommissioning plan for this solar system in the 25 to 30 years? Is that about right where these panels are no longer functional?
Thank you. That's a great question. So the decommissioning you refer to for the solar array actually begins effectively on day one. What we would do, and what solar developers typically do, is set aside money in escrow, in a bond, that we do not have access to but can be used and will be used when the project has reached its end of life. And that is something that we determine. It's, of course, very difficult to look out into the future 25 years, but we try to arrive at a really, an appropriate figure in consultation with the town, with other consultants as well. And that is something that is able to be drawn upon at the end of the useful life.
Yeah, Ms. O'Connell?
So, so is that a part of the contract? Do we have that in writing?
So that is not part of the CPA, AMP agreement, or the landowner CPA agreement, but that is part of the permitting process with the town that will come later.
We have that in writing, how we will dispose of or recommission, decommission, however this works.
So it is currently not in writing, but it is an integral part of these, development of these types of systems and will be.
And so, of course, before the powers that be sign this agreement, we will have that in writing, what to do for recycling and disposing and so on.
We can make our best effort to try to come up with a figure as soon as possible.
Ms. Segal?
I'd like to support everything Joe Neto said, and I'd like to answer to some of the people who have concerns about cutting down the trees, go into some of the ramifications of what is going to happen here. And there are some good figures that come from Chris Neal of the Woodwell Climate Research Center with some good estimates. What is proposed to clear 16 acres of trees? The result of that will be a one-time release of 500 metric tons of carbon. By installing 80 acres of solar panels, we'll save 1,700 metric tons per year of carbon than if the same amount of electricity were generated by gas generators, which are responsible for most of Massachusetts' electricity. So without cutting, the 16 acres of trees would sequester about seven metric tons per year of carbon. But the 80 acres of solar panels will save 1,700 metric tons per year of carbon from being produced. In terms of the amount of carbon saved over time, the panels win big. So 64 acres have already been cleared for fairways, and by clearing only 16 more, we get 80 acres for panels. The trees will be cut down, and there will be no solar panels if the land is developed for housing. Dr. Neal ends his article that he wrote in The Enterprise by saying this, "To unhitch ourselves from fossil carbon and save the planet, we are going to have to switch to capturing the energy in what amounts to real time from sunlight, moving air, and falling water. That is going to take a lot of space, and it's going to force us to make a lot of compromises that we will not like. Putting solar panels on land and even clearing some trees in the process is going to be one of them." He concludes by saying, "There's a moral dimension in making hard choices to generate more renewable energy close to home. And if we don't make them, we'll have to explain to our grandchildren why solving the climate crisis was just too hard." Please vote in favor of both of these articles. Thank you.
Ms. Leonardi? Our microphone in the center here? Yeah, right there in the center.
Amy, Amy Leonardi, Precinct Eight. I have a question for the petitioner. Do any of the clearings that are to be done, will they affect any current access to those ponds and trails? If so, how much, or will there be something, another access created as a result?
Yeah, so in, in the clearing of the trees and siding of the solar array, we would take great care to ensure that it would not interfere with access to the trails going around the pond. That is something we've been speaking with the Coonamasa Pond Association with very closely. And when we are most likely beginning construction, which will be, you know, over a year and a half, two years from now, that's when we would be also trying to do that concurrently while the construction equipment is there.
Okay, Ms. Harris?
I'm glad the issue of the trees came up. I'd like to explain the Planning Board's thinking in approving this and hoping that you will vote for it. We voted for it 7-0. It was solid agreement among all members of the Planning Board. If you take a look in the, in your warrant booklet, you're going to see that there's a map of the town with its special districts, and it's on page 19. And I want to direct you to the ones that are outlined in blue. These are water resource districts. And you'll see that Coonamasa Pond and the land around it and behind it where that's at issue right now is in a water resource district. This town has a vision of what it wants to be, and it calls itself the Local Comprehensive Plan. It's our master plan. That plan has two policies in it that bear, that talk, it directs our thinking really about this proposal. The first is in energy, and several speakers have already addressed that. We're trying to make ourselves energy resilient. We're working on that, and this will help us. It will be solar. But the one we haven't talked about yet is what has protected, if you drive along Route 151, you're going to see a lot of open land. That's conservation land. And it's not an accident that it's there. It's sitting right on top of the aquifer. And the aquifer is all that water resource land. It's actually larger than that, but this project will be right on top of the aquifer. We have a long-term plan in Falmouth for protecting that aquifer for reasons that are too obvious to try to review them now. So when we looked at this, yes, our hearts went out about the trees, but the water is irreplaceable, so we really approved of this. This one that's here, number six, allows for a larger array than just number seven because it gives it special permission to cut a little closer to some of the trees on the conservation land, makes it more flexible in how they use it. They can put in a bigger array. A bigger array means a greater energy savings. Doesn't affect the aquifer. It does cost a few trees that they're going to replace. We wanted to see as efficient an array as they were willing to propose, so we support Article Six. And I hope that you will, too. It's the policy of the town, really, that's being put to you. When you put it into action, this is what it looks like.
Mr. Scherer?
My name's Darren Scherer. I didn't come to speak tonight. I wasn't going to. I thought that this article would be turned down very quickly. And I agree with Joe and that we need this, we need to do this. But I've, at our precinct meeting, I heard the best salesman's pitch with no direct answers. I heard the same thing tonight of all the things that we're going to get. And when I asked him, for instance, how much he was going to have to rebuild this, he said a few thousand dollars. And I said, "How about a million?" And he said, "Oh, no, that couldn't happen." I mean, I would like to see, we're ahead of ourselves. We didn't make this article, the company that wants to come in here and build the largest field in Massachusetts on Cape Cod. I think we're jumping ahead. I want to see a contract of sometimes what they will do, what it's going to mean in our taxes, what it's going, if we're going to get any taxes from it. Are we going to get anything or to help us? Or is this just for a company, or to make millions of dollars and use our land? There are other places in Falmouth that we can put solar panels, and I'm all for it. For instance, a nice field would be on the Steamship Authority parking lot beside the ice rink. And if we start thinking, they can go all over here, and they can all benefit the town too, and not a large company that wants to come in here and do a job. Let's vote this down now and get some more definite facts and figures and put it up to us. We pass this tonight, it'll be up to a few people to make the decision and the contract with the company, and this, we will never have another thing to say about it. This also will go, what we're doing here tonight, to any other company that wants to come in here and buy a piece of land. So please, vote this down tonight. Let's think about it, let's, or work on it, get some direct answers. We, we don't have them, and it's all, yes, we plan to do this, we plan to negotiate. And, and how much taxes do we get from the golf course? Does anybody know? Has anybody looked it up? It's 579,000 and some more. I did look it up. And I think we should all look down and say, hey, let's know all the facts, which we don't have now. We had two sales pitches tonight. One, as a member of the Rules Committee, I would have, but the moderator stopped the first speaker because she was giving a report, but she was also giving a sales pitch on an article on our warrant. pitch on an article on our warrant. We don't need a salesman. We need some facts. Thank you, and please vote no.
Okay, folks, whoa, whoa, let's go. Mr. Young?
I have a brief statement, but before I do, I'd just like to look around and tell everybody, doesn't it seem familiar? We were going through this with the wind turbines and this is momentum. It's a momentum. I can feel it right there.
Mr. Young, could you hold on for a moment? If there's any more outbursts up there, the constable will clear the aisle, okay? I've got you on the list, the gentleman with the blue shirt, you're on my list. But the rest of you, you don't need to be yelling and clapping. If you want to speak, stand up, I'll put you on my list. That's how democracy works. Mr. Young?
Okay. In full disclosure, I would like to inform town meeting members that I was a nine-year member of the town's Golf Advisory Committee. I really enjoyed that, but I couldn't go after nine years. And former chairman the last three years. I am not a member of Cape Cod Country Club, but I have played golf there on and off for 50 years. I'm very familiar with the layout. The zoning change proposed, adding a large-scale, ground-mounted solar overlay district, allowing a solar farm to be built in Hatchville, is not a good one. Hatchville is that part of town where we all think of countryside, rural, and woodsy. There are farms, ponds, and open space, walking trails, and residences that are spaced further apart than other areas in our town. And yes, there is a historic, century-old public golf course with adjoining open space containing mature forests. Solar array and wind turbines are both sources of electricity that I embrace and I support. Their location, however, is critical to a community's acceptance of them. The three solar arrays we have in town meet that positive criteria. The major solar array placed over the town disposal area is a good example of a proper site. This zoning proposal, taking away a public golf course, a recreational facility open to all, located in a residential area, is not a good site, not a good plan. A letter from the Falmouth Zoning Board of Appeals that I obtained opposes this change and it says in part, "While the board fully supports measures to encourage renewable energy production within the town of Falmouth, we also recognize and wish to emphasize the critical importance of appropriate siting of such projects, especially large, utility-scale projects. We believe the town of Falmouth has many appropriate sites for this placement of a large ground-mounted solar array and has already exploited some of these, such as the municipal landfill. It is not necessary or advisable to encourage development of such arrays in unsuitable sites, which we believe the proposed changes would do." Beaches, the waterways, the bike path, the summer baseball, and quaint villages are all part of our town and things we do to enjoy. Open space with golf is also a part of our town's fabric. We lose a little bit more of our town with the loss of Cape Cod Country Club. The golf course originally called Coonamessit is 93 years old and has seen all levels of play, from local amateurs to top-flight pros with both professional and state amateur tournaments held there. This golf course is a real gem. Summer visitors who play there also help the town's economy by vacationing in Falmouth. It would be a shame for this open space to be turned into an industrial complex to make electricity. Our town's solar array at the disposal area is what it would look like in Hatchville if this goes through. Many acres of solar screens. The gentleman told me the other night at the precinct meeting, 35,000 to 40,000 panels, with the entire project surrounded by an eight-foot-high chain-link fence. A promise to give the land to the town is just a promise. At our precinct meeting, Mr. Suso said there have been no discussions between the proponents and the town, only the Lockstead Group. Seven years ago, we lost a nine-hole Woodbrier Golf Course downtown to a senior living facility. Now with the potential loss of Cape Cod Country Club, we would lose an additional 18 holes of golfing opportunity. This would be a loss of 27 holes of golf that was available and affordable for public play. As a body, we voted, and I voted, in favor of building the wind turbines in 2009. We thought at that time we were doing the right thing for our town. Look how that has ended. Putting a solar array like a wind turbine in a residential area is a mistake.
Mr. Young, you're at four minutes.
Okay, thank you. It is a mistake to put a wind turbine in this area.
Mr. Donahue? Ms. Segal, you're on the list.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to our attorney. I would like to ask if the deconstruction of this facility should be looked at from a perspective of law and also the finances of it. It seems very shaky to me that we're voting to allow a huge thing like this to go someplace and with no real facts as to how much is it going to cost to tear it down and who's going to pay for it. It could just be a blight 50 years from now. I won't be here, but my grandchildren will. So right now, I'm voting against this. I think it needs a lot more work. As Mr. Scherer said, it's just, we've been through this before, guys. Let's not do it again. We need a, we need a contract. We need to know A, B, C, D. What's going, what's step one, two, three, and four? Once we know that, then we can vote intelligently on a project like this. Thank you.
Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Donahue, Frank Duffy, Town Counsel. I don't know any more about the project than I've heard here tonight, although I have had the opportunity to review the memorandum of understanding and the agreement that's been circulated around by the proponents. I guess, like you, I'm probably not going to be here in 50 years, but I'm looking at this right now from an economic point of view. I don't have any more information than the town meeting has.
Okay, I had the gentleman in the blue shirt on the top left of the, you were standing there? Yep, you. No? You were standing at one point. You didn't want to speak? I've got you on the list in the front of the, front row as well. Ms. Murphy, you're on the list as well. I got you. You've been on it for a while.
As soon as I open my voice, you'll know I'm not from here. I'm from Long Island, New York, where they took all our woods, all our salt boshes, all our beaches, and all the thing you're talking about, and turned it into a parking lot. Welcome to Long Island. That's what you're doing here. This golf course is a part of Falmouth. It's not just a cow pasture or a dump. It's unbelievable that youth people, I'm not from here, that youth people would vote to allow a beautiful golf course like Cape Cod Country Club to go and turn into a solar array. I worked on youth hockey. I did that, solar panels there. That was a great project. That project made sense. This one does not. Yous don't play golf, obviously, the people against this. But if you play golf, you'll know Cape Cod Country Club is Falmouth. That's why people come here to play golf, to go to the 14th hole. Arnold Palmer played there. William Shatner played there. I heard Jackie Gleason played there. This is not just a golf course. This is a part of your history. And it's a shame and disgusting that you would vote to allow this to happen in your town. Welcome to Long Island, people.
Ms. Murphy? Yep, Ms. Murphy?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Carol Murphy, Precinct 9. Mr. Chabot, I would like to know what's going to happen with all of that lumber that you are going to clear. Are you going to make money selling it? What is going to happen to all of that wood? Thank you.
That's a good question with all the high price of lumber these days. We would not be looking to make money from that lumber, that wood. Typically, what is done is it's chipped and used on-site for stabilizing the grounds for where the array would go. If we wanted to try to keep the noise level down, it's been talked about trying to bring the wood off-site, but it's also been expressed by others in the town that they would potentially want to see the wood used and staying on-site. So that's what the plan would be.
Want to follow up?
What are you going to make from the wood? What kind of money would you make selling the wood? I'd like to know.
We will not be selling the wood. It'll be chipped and it will be used on-site to stabilize the grounds for the solar array.
All of the wood that's cut down?
The wood, probably, yes. Probably most of it, if not all the wood, would be used, but we do not sell timber that we chop down.
So you're going to make wood chips out of the, all of the cuttings of the trees?
Out of the acreage that we have to remove, that would be the goal, yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Out of the wood, the trees that are removed, that would be the goal, yes.
And, and did you have a number to anticipate how many cubic yards of wood chips you're going to have from all of this wood?
I do not have that figure.
Okay, we're getting a little beyond the scope of a zoning article.
Thank you.
Okay, the gentleman where he was over here. Ms. Carey, you're on the list. This is a big list. See, yep.
My name's Leo Fahey, Precinct 7. I've roughly been a resident of the town for 17 years, going on 18. My first 15 years, I lived in Lockstead along Coonamessit Pond. There are three beaches on Coonamessit Pond that encompass the Lockstead neighborhood. I have four sons. As they grew in this town, we explored those ponds. We take walks around the golf course. We take walks around the open space. Show them how to track. Show them how to hunt. Show them how to play golf. Show them how to survive if something ever went wrong in the wild. Those sons grew up to be Falmouth High School athletes. Hockey, baseball, golf. This is not about golf. It's not about solar panels. Because I do believe we need renewable energies. And again, but not in this facility. This is open space. This is beautiful, open space that thousands of residents will now be shoved out of permanently. During COVID lockdown, that facility, as well as Falmouth Country Club, were God-sent. God knows how many people may have saved their lives because their minds could release some energy during a lockdown. Let's talk about what it is. It's just strictly a money grab. We all know it. There's a private land developer, owner. God, it's their land, they have the right to figure out what they can do to get the best money for it. I'm not saying that. But not enough work was looked into keeping it for the city the way it was. This is a private money grab. AMP is going to make a fortune. So yes, they can say they'll give you back these things. Yes, they can say they'll do these things. But they haven't done them yet. You can't approve a project until you know the nuts and bolts of what's going to go on with that project and what you're going to get of it. There's a lot of maybes, a lot of pie in the skies. But if you don't negotiate, you have all the power, we have the power. You need it in writing. You need to know what's going to happen if you don't agree. This is a bad decision to take away our children, our sports teams, our open space. Where's the next open space another AMP is going to grab, another solar panel is going to grab? Maybe the bike path? Maybe somewhere else, maybe Gov Field? Who knows? You don't take open space. Find an industrial area. Find an area that's, we probably have open solar array space available in the town. I don't know if we do. But this project is bad for this location. Those ponds, I've swam them, I've walked them, they're pristine, that pond. And that golf course has been there for 100 years almost. They take great care of what they do and how they pesticide and what they put into that golf course. If you walked it, it's wild as can be. It's beautiful. And I find it ironic, for those who maybe do watch the last four golf tournaments that are on TV, national TV. Every Thursday, there's a commercial that comes on and says, "Hi, we're the Frails. Come on down to Cape Cod Country Club." And I'll quote, "where we promote and foster the game of golf and to protect the environment and where we are." That's on every Thursday during a golf tournament. Kind of ironic. Please, I ask you as a father, as a sportsman, as an open-space lover, vote this down. You don't have a plan. There's maybes what's going to happen. Maybe you're going to get this, maybe you won't get this. Not a good spot for this. Thank you.
Okay, the gentleman in the front of the bleachers.
For the record, I'm Matt Terry with the law firm of Amen and Clower here in town, and I'm the attorney for AMP Solar. I wanted to take just a couple minutes of your time briefly, just to explain some misconceptions that I think have come up through the course of conversation this evening. And I'll just sort of tick through the list. With respect to revenue, right now, the property is in Chapter 61B, so it has a tax break in exchange for keeping the property in recreational use. So the tax revenue to the town is relatively low. It's in the tens of thousands per year. If Articles Six and Seven were to pass, then in addition to donating the property to the town, the town would then enter into a lease with AMP Solar for the lifetime of the solar array. There would be lease revenue. Plus, in all of these projects, the solar operator enters into a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with the town. We just finished successfully permitting a project, a solar project in Sandwich, which is my hometown and where I live, where we're going to be donating the property to the town, leasing it back for lease revenue on an annual basis, entering into a separate pilot agreement just based on approximate, let's say, 21 megawatts for all three of these projects that are under consideration this evening. If AMP was to pay, and this is just for illustrative purposes, $7,500 per megawatt per year for 21 megawatts, that's $157,000 per year to the town in pilot payments, plus whatever the negotiated lease rate would be. On the decommissioning point, it's a condition of the current bylaw that the...
Go ahead. He did, he did say he didn't live in Falmouth. So to speak at town meeting, we have to have a majority vote for non-resident citizens or taxpayers. Do you own property in Falmouth?
Not yet.
Okay. All those in favor of allowing the gentleman to continue signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. For decommissioning, it's a requirement of the bylaw that you enter into a decommissioning agreement with the town. It's also going to be a condition of the Cape Cod Commission. So this isn't a situation where the town of Falmouth might be left holding the bag. When we permitted the Sandwich project, we're negotiating a decommissioning agreement where AMP has to post a bond upfront. It gets revisited every five years so that if there are unexpected economic consequences or developments, the bond adequately protects for the removal of the array. So it isn't going to be a situation where it's going to be left rusting on the property. In terms of control after tonight, a couple things to keep in mind. One is, you're voting on Article Seven to change the solar overlay district to include these parcels. So any subsequent changes with respect to solar, any of the changes that are proposed in Article Six, this town meeting will have the ability to expand the solar district further or not. So if subsequent developers for other projects in other parts of town come, town meeting will be able to decide at that point in time whether to extend the solar overlay district to those lots or not, if they feel that the project isn't appropriate. In terms of... In terms of this particular project, the town is still going to be able to weigh in after this evening as part of the site plan, special permit review process with the planning board, part of the Cape Cod Commission's review. So there are plenty of opportunities remaining to discuss this project with the developer and to voice any concerns that might come up throughout the permitting process, which is expected to last for the next year to eighteen months. In terms of the future of the golf course, David Frail, the owner, came to our firm probably about a year and a half ago to see what he could do with the property, because it's no longer financially feasible as a golf course. And that's true today, just as much as it was a year and a half ago, even with a bump in revenue from the pandemic. There are too many golf courses on Cape Cod and just not enough golfers. So I understand that folks have a lot of, you know, great memories for this golf course, but it will not continue to be a golf course. When Mr. Frail came to our office, he was initially looking at a forty-plus lot subdivision plus a significant forty-B development in the southern portion of the property. Through discussions with him, and then discussions with AMP Solar, he was convinced...
The gentleman's time has expired.
He was convinced that the solar project was a better way than housing. It is, will not remain open space. It's going to be something else. It's a privately-owned property. So I'd ask Mr. Botter if I could be put back on the end for two minutes, if that's possible?
Sure.
Just if there are other questions that come up through the balance of the conversation. Thank you very much.
Ms. Shepherd?
Susan Shepherd, Precinct 1. I, I think this is a project that the town totally should support. I'm, I'm really shocked by the amount of opposition. The owner wants to sell the property. This is an opportunity for the town. We need more renewable energy. And I cannot imagine a project which actually would affect the neighbors and the town less in a bad way than, than this project. And it protects the aquifer, it, it gives us renewable energy, it gives the owner the opportunity to sell it. I, I just, we should vote for this, folks.
Ms. Carey?
Thank you. I echo the previous comments completely, but I also had to respond to the earlier comment that the Energy Committee was making a sales pitch. I would remind the speaker who made the comment that we're volunteers. We've spent weeks and months carefully analyzing the proposal, attending Planning Board, Zoning Board meetings and so on. And we see that it's a good plan. There are measures for protecting the water, generously replanting the trees, just all of the community benefits. The most important, I think, is that the land, if Article 6 passes, the land will be given to the town for permanent conservation. And I'm thinking of my children and grandchildren, that this would be a gift to them. And we have a willing partner right now, and we're in a climate emergency. We need to move forward. Thank you.
Ms. Siegel?
I ask you to listen to the facts. This will not remain a golf course. It is going to be sold. If the solar array is not built there, there will be houses. And the runoff, the nitrogen from the houses will go into the pond, which is one of the reasons that the neighbors want this to happen. The neighbors are supporting this. We must look farther ahead than the ends of our noses. We are in a crisis. And we may not have felt it right here yet, but if you look around the country, you get a sense of what's coming. Please help us look to the future, look ahead, and not just deal with the moment and our own needs and desires. This is one of the hard choices that I was talking about earlier. Please vote for this. Thank you.
Mr. Patrick?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I was just going to point out, when Mr. Terry and Ms. Siegel pointed out, that if this is not turned into a solar photovoltaic farm, it will be built as residential development. And we're very fortunate to have the owner negotiating with the AMP to make this happen. I think it's something we need, and I think we need to vote for it. Matt Patrick, Precinct 7. Thank you.
The gentleman at the end of the aisle? No, you want to be off the list? Okay. A woman with a blue shirt to the right somewhere, black mask, blue shirt? Nope, off the list. What's that? You're going to move the previous question? Okay. The question will come on moving the previous question. This is a two-thirds vote whether or not to close discussion. All those in favor of moving the previous question signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? It's a print of the chair that the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and discussion is closed on the main motion. The main motion of Article 6 is as recommended, as printed in your warrant book. This requires a two-thirds vote, so I'm going to just count it from the start. All those in favor of the main motion as recommended signify by standing, and the tell is a return account. Second division. Thirty-four. Third division. Fifty-one. First division. Sixty-one. All those opposed signify by standing, and the tell is a return account. Second division. Nine. Third division. Eighteen. First division. Sixteen-one-six? Sixteen. By a count of vote of one hundred and forty-six in favor and forty-three opposed, the necessary two-thirds is attained. Article 7. Madam Chair, for the main motion on Article 7.
Article 7 by petition, the recommendation is that the town vote as printed. A map of the proposed new large-scale ground-mounted solar overlay district is provided on page twenty of your booklet. You can look to see, when you look at it, notice that it's not the entire country club. And I, that's the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on applying the map? Yep. Mr. Noon?
Mr. Moderator, on Article 7, I was wondering, how many, how much is the bond that's going to be used for decommissioning?
That's actually beyond the scope of, this is just putting a map together. That was a... We can get all those answers. It was asked a couple times during the previous debate, and we didn't have a full number there. That can be done during the permitting process. So this is whether or not to, to put the zone that you just voted on on the map in the location listed. Way out in the back, right? Mr. Donald? I'm usually pretty good with names, but it's kind of hard with the masks to figure out who's who.
Malcolm Donald, Precinct 6. Got two questions. One is for AMP. I'm wondering if the MOU has been registered with the Barnstable County of Deeds?
The MOU, the MOU has not been registered with the Barnstable County of Deeds, but the binding agreement between the current landowner and the CPA is due to be registered this week.
And my second question is to Mr. Duffy. My concern is that the town end up with the property, and you have had a chance to look at this, and will this, will these legal agreements make that happen?
Go ahead, Mr. Timas. Yeah. Yeah, we are, we are kind of stretching the, the four corners of this, but Mr. Duffy, you want to just take a quick hit at that, and then we'll, we'll go?
May I, may I make us, if, if, if the answers aren't sufficient, then we don't need to vote to make this part of the overlay. So it does have a definite bearing on it.
Mr. Donald, Frank Duffy, Town Council. The developer has produced two documents, which I believe have been circulated among the town meeting members, although I don't know for sure. As the gentleman just said, the memorandum of understanding has not been recorded in the Registry of Deeds, and it never was intended to be recorded in the Registry of Deeds. The other document, which is known as the Agreement, which is the agreement between the Coonamessett Pond Association and the new Cape Cod Country Club, which is the current owner, was supposed to be recorded. I understand it wasn't. Mr. Terry, who's spoken to you earlier, explained to me why it wasn't, and I understand his, his explanation. The, the Land Court at the Registry of Deeds has changed some of the regulations regarding plans that are recorded. I fell into that trap. I've had a couple of documents that have been returned in the last few weeks. He's assured us that it will be returned, will be recorded. The agreements are with the owner of the land and the future owner of the land. They are not with the town. The town will have the right to enforce them. There's a provision in the agreement that the regulatory agencies, such as the Planning Board and the Cape Cod Commission, will be able to put the conditions of the agreements into the permits. That's all in the future. We hope it happens. But they are valid agreements, if that's your question, Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. Okay. Yep, to my right.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ed Swart, Seven Harmony Street, Precinct 3. And this may be a little bit out of the scope also, but in reference to the pilot agreement that was brought up earlier, am I to assume that that pilot agreement will have to come back to town meeting before it is approved?
Mr. Duffy?
Frank Duffy, Town Council. Sir, the pilot agreement is a payment in lieu of taxes agreement. We have two, I believe, two payment in lieu of taxes agreements with the developers of the other solar projects in town. That is an agreement that is negotiated with the Board of Assessors and then approved by the Select Board. The amount of tax, of payment in lieu of taxes depends on the value of the property, depends on the value of the equipment that is purchased and installed. This is information we do not know, so we don't, do not actually know what the payment in lieu of taxes will be. But in any event, it's the Board of Assessors and the Select Board that approves it. It does not come back to town meeting.
Is that, is that by bylaw? Because the community I moved from, town meeting had to approve all solar pilot agreements, solar in specifics.
We haven't done it. We don't have to...
I didn't hear that, sorry.
No, our practice is, no, we don't have to come back to town meeting.
Okay. To, to the point of the value of the land is built into pilot agreements, I would ask, when that is negotiated, that since this land is being donated to the town, that it be taken to account what the real estate property taxes would be on this parcel of land if it were to remain owned by the developer versus that, that is a way around, donating the land and leasing it back from the town. It becomes personal property taxes on the, on the property, on the solar panels, but it takes the parcel of land off the tax rolls. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Okay. The question will come on the main motion of setting the map for the overlay district as printed. All those in favor signify by standing, and the tell is a return account. This is also a two-thirds. And the second division. Thirty-three. And the third division. Fifty-three. In the first division. Sixty? Six-zero? Sixty. All those opposed signify by standing, and the tell is a return account. And the second division. Nine. And the seventeen in the third division. The first division. Thirteen. By a count of vote of one hundred and forty-six in favor and thirty-nine opposed, the necessary two-thirds is attained. Article eight, this is held by the Select Board for a new main motion, or a recommendation which will be the main motion. Mr. Chairman? The other chairman.
So, Mr. Moderator, unfortunately, engineering indicates that the final step of this three-part procedure was not completed with the holding of a hearing. The formal follow-up notification to all affected properties has not been completed. So we're going to recommend indefinite postponement, indefinite postponement, and take it up in November.
Okay. So because of a procedural glitch, should we have indefinite postponement on Article eight as the main motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no? The ayes have it unanimous. The ayes have it unanimous. Article 9. Mr. Chairman of the Finance Committee for the main motion.
I move Article 9 as recommended.
As recommended, this is to transfer the sum of $3,000 from Certified Free Cash to authorize the Board of Selectmen to purchase or take by eminent domain property easement consisting of a small strip of land at 241 Scranton Avenue to eliminate an encroachment. Okay, discussion. Yep.
Good evening, members, board members. My name is Larry O'Brien. I'm the owner of 241 Scranton Avenue. I own the property in which the town has encroached by placing a sidewalk there. This became an issue when we purchased the land, and we notified the town twenty years ago, two decades ago, and we've been on top of them ever since to try and correct it. We are not in favor of a taking. Not to have a taking of eminent domain, it has to be a necessity. This, the street, the right-of-way there is forty feet wide. The sidewalk and the travel lanes combined measure thirty feet. Thirty feet goes into forty feet once with ten left over. So rather than even have to move the travel lane, they could leave the travel lane as is and just move the sidewalk to the other side of the street. I, I sent a copy of this today to the Town Council. Mr. Duffy? One possible solution. I'm sure there are other possible solutions. Most of all, we would like to resolve this, as in the past twenty years, we have yet to have curb cuts and be able to access our property. This has become a burden, as we'd like to finish this house and we actually be able to move in. Some of the delays was after we started building the house, there was a, there was an attack of the Twin Towers in New York City. As a Marine Corps reservist, I spent ten, out of the next ten years, out of the next decade, I spent six years overseas in Iraq, Afghanistan, Kuwait, Djibouti, and Bahrain. When I came back on the GI Bill, I attended law school, in no small part to figure out how to correct this issue with the Town of Falmouth. So today, I'm asking the Town of Falmouth Town Member Meetings, Town Meeting Members to vote against an eminent domain. I don't think it would pass the Law Department because there's no necessity. I would, however, encourage that the town, in fact, engage in some discussions and how we can find a mutual solution to this issue, which we've been requesting for years. Thank you very much.
Okay. Further discussion on Article 9. What's that?
Thank you.
Well, I'm sorry, one moment. I didn't, yeah, go ahead, Peter. You wanted to... Yeah? Yeah, go ahead. We're gonna, Peter's gonna present, and then, Mr. Dunn, and then I'll have you on my list. Sorry about that.
Good evening. Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. Just as a clarification, I believe the article stated that at the, in the rear of the book, there was a sketch plan or exhibit plan of the property, and it was not. So earlier this evening, before town meeting began, we did place a, a sketch on each chair. Hopefully, everyone did get that. If not... So this is the Article 9. It's a, we're looking to do a taking plan for easement. I've got fast fingers here. This is, so, this is a sketch plan of the property, and my next slide will show you a good indication of where it actually is on Scranton Avenue. But what we're looking to do, as you can see on the south side of the property, the area that's enhatched is the area that we're looking to be taking an easement on. So the south side of the property is approximately six to eight inches wide, and then as you go to the north side of the property on Salt Sea Lane, it gets wider to a little over a foot on that side. As you can see, Salt Sea Lane, it's a driveway. It's not a roadway. It's, it's part of the Falmouth Housing Property. So the area that we're looking to take is approximately one hundred and fifty-five square feet. As you can see, as it goes around that corner, it gets a little wider. What happens with Scranton Avenue in this area is the roadway is forty feet directly in front of 241 Scranton Avenue. Just as it goes into Salt Sea Lane on the north side, it turns into fifty feet wide. So it's an extra ten foot wide for the, for the roadway. And just as an indication, the property owner had mentioned that the right-of-way in front of his area is forty feet wide. True, it is forty feet wide. Scranton Avenue is not laid out in the center of the roadway. It's more portioned to the west side. So on the east side, there's more property, or more grass area, so the, the roadway is not directly in the center of the roadway. So the extra ten feet is actually not correct. It's, it's, there's more room on the, on the east side than there is on the west side. So just as an aerial here, as you can see, you see the building on the right, big blue roof. That's the Flying Bridge Restaurant. I'm sure everyone has dined there or knows exactly where it is. Just north of that, the parking lot, that's the Marina Parking Lot. I'm sure everyone's been to the Marina Parking Lot. So we're talking about the property. It's directly across from the Flying Bridge. As you can see in the property at corners of Salt Sea Lane, the property at this time, this is a recent photo, the property at this time does not, does not have a driveway. The northern side of the house is actually a two-car garage, but as you can see, it's grass in front of the house, and then the sidewalk, and then the roadway. So over the years, and, and also, as you can see, Scranton Ave is a very, it's a long, straight roadway. So in order for the town to go in and to relocate Scranton Avenue to center it in the middle of the roadway, it would be an exorbitant amount of, of cost, because it wouldn't just be directly in front of the house of 241. You would have to go several hundred feet up the roadway and several hundred feet down the roadway to make sure that everything aligns, so you wouldn't have an abrupt change in, in the roadway surface. So as the property owner had mentioned, this has been going on. I started with the town in 2007. So this prop, this was already in play in 2007 when I came, so the property owner was working with the previous Assistant Town Engineer and the previous Director of Public Works. When I started with the town, I started getting involved with it in 2007, and the property owner was working with Town Council and the Director of Public Works at the time. So there was many scenarios that have been talked about. Putting the sidewalk on the opposite side of the road, moving the roadway, but the one that was in favor, and it was, at the time, it was a little more, it would have lined up a little bit more with, better with the property owner looking for the option. What he wanted to do is he wanted, he was asking the town to remove a portion of sidewalk in front of his driveway and add the driveway portion, so it was the up and down, so it would be his curb cut to his driveway. That was back in 2007, 2008. So in recent years, we've worked with the property owner, and what had happened is the costs have skyrocketed, so the, the cost of actually, for the town to remove that sidewalk and replace that sidewalk with curb cuts would be at least four to five times the amount of what's written in the, in the, in the town meeting booklet. So one of the items that we were looking to do in working with Town Councils is to see if we could work with licenses versus easements. I'm not going to get too far into that. I am a professional land surveyor, but I'm not going to get too far into that. It's more questions that would be for Town Council. But with a license, the license is revocable. So any work that we did on the property, or any work that was done out there, after it was completed, the property owner could revoke it and revoke the license, and we'd be back to beginning again. So what we were looking to do is, is to do an easement. So an easement actually gets recorded against the land at the Registry of Deeds in Barnstable. So that's the area that we were looking to do. We have met the property owner over the years multiple times. I've met him several times, the end of last year and the beginning of this year. We did receive an email from the property owner at the beginning of this year that he did want to get this resolved, so he could move on and, and start working on the remainder of the house and get this behind us. However, when we did meet with him, we were still with that issue of the easement versus a license, and also the cost of including a driveway opening for the property. It's, it's, it's a, a much higher price than what the town could afford, and it's actually what's in the book. So that's, that's where we stand right now. So at the time, when we looked at that, and I met with the property owner, and we didn't have a resolution on that, we, we started working with Town Council, and that's when we came up with this, with this article, to see if we could take a taking for an easement. And that's where we stood. We're, we're, we are still open to the fact of working with, with the property owner. We want to get this resolved ourselves, but as, as the property owner has mentioned, this has been going on for, I said fifteen years, but obviously, he says over twenty years, so it's been going on for a while, and we would like to get it resolved. What we are asking, that's in the Town Meeting booklet, is that the town transfer the amount of $3,000 from Certified Cash for the purposes of Article 9, to be expended under the jurisdiction of the, of the town manager. Apologize for the sketch not being in the back of the book, and I think we had corrected it tonight by placing it on each, on each chair. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. Bill Dineen, Precinct 5. And first of all, I want to say that Mr. O'Brien and I served together years ago, four, over forty years ago, in the Marine Corps, and he's a great Marine. He forwarded something to me, and I was a little taken back by this, that, that he started this in nineteen ninety-five. He started, the sidewalk was encroached. It was put in by the town, surveyed, wrong by the town, and it's been wrong since. And he had approval over the years by town to correct it. In April of 2019, in May 2019, in May, again, 2019. And each time, the town was going to correct it, and it wasn't corrected. He just wants access to the main street. He's got a house. And one of the, one of the excuses that came out was, in this, in this article tonight was, to comply with the American with Disabilities Act. Well, Mr. O'Brien is a disabled veteran, okay? It's ironic, but that's why he can't get this done. We're better than that, people. We're better than that. We spared a sit-down and not slam dunk $3,000 over twenty-seven years to satisfy this homeowner. That's not the reason. We're better than that. We can sit down as a board, gone to four boards since he started this process, served overseas, almost ten years in combat. He comes back here and costs too much to fix the curb. Unacceptable. He should be ashamed of ourselves. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. McConity.
Yes, Peter McConity, Director of Public Works. Yes, I would, Mr. O'Brien, wherever you are in this audience, I would like to say thank you for your service to the, to this country. It's much appreciated. Just for the record, that we did look at with the, with the property owner of putting in a curb cut for the property. With that, it was still the issue of an easement versus a license. If we, if we did that work, and it was under a license, then the property owner at any point in time could revoke the license at the end of that, that time, and then we'd be right back to the hundred and seventy-three feet of encroachment. This hundred and seventy-three feet of encroachment, yes, it was an accident that the town, when they repaved the roadway back in the nineteen, late eighties, early nineties, it was an accident that the town, that the town laid the road out that way and paved it. The sidewalk is a concrete sidewalk. It doesn't, it does not affect the property, however, as the property owner wants to, to have the encroachment taken care of and fixed. So it's not that, the town has not worked with the property owner. The town has worked with the property owner many, many times. We've met out there many times, and the property owner will attest to that. It's coming up with a solution that'll work for both the town and the, and the, the property owner. And just, just for the ADA access, if we cut that sidewalk in front, on the north side, it'll be less than the required amount for the, for ADA wheelchair access in the, on the sidewalk, which would be, we recommend five feet, but it's a minimum of four feet, and it would be less than four feet. It would be, it would be three point eight or three point nine feet. So, thank you.
Mr. McConity, before you leave, you said it would be about four times the cost that's printed in the warrant booklet, to do the curb cutting and the replacement, the way that the initial negotiation went. So around $12,000?
So the last estimate that we got, which was approximately three months ago, there's two options that the property owner would like. He'd like a access in front of his property, and then the second one that he really would like is a round, a drive-through access, or rounded, so he could get out on two areas on Scranton Ave. The single, in front of his garage, the single access to repair that was about $13,000, and if we put the other edge in at the other side of the property, it was about eighteen to nineteen thousand dollars.
Mr. Duffy, my understanding is that the town did this project incorrectly, correct?
Sorry, Mr. Vier, I didn't understand the first part of your question, even though you're about ten feet away from me.
Sure, sure. So my understanding from this conversation tonight is that when the town did this road, it did it incorrectly.
My understanding is that Scranton Avenue is out of alignment, and it runs for quite a distance, several hundred feet along the street, including the frontage on 241.
Mr. McConity, based on that assumption, is it the town's responsibility? Was it the town that did that incorrectly and put that offline? Or was it the state or a third party, or was it the Town of Falmouth?
The, I, I think I got most of your question there, is that the, the town did it, laid it out and paved it. It is on the private property of the abutter, and to take it off the private property of the abutter would be several hundred feet each way to go up on the roadway, if, if we were going to do that. It would be a realignment of Scranton Avenue. And at this time, on the opposite side of the roadway, there's a utility pole that we'd have to deal with also to, to realign that roadway.
Okay. Ms. Mullen, are you still here? Is Ms. Mullen here, Mr. Sousa? She just stepped out. Well, maybe Mr. Sousa can answer this. Could you tell me how much Certified Free Cash the Town of Falmouth approximately has right now? You can see where I'm going with this. This is a disgrace. This, in my mind, and I don't usually do this, but this is a disgrace. We screwed it up. Fix it with millions of dollars of Certified Free Cash. Fix it. Mr. Potamus, you're next on my list.
Jerry Potamus, Precinct 2. I agree with you, Mr. Moderator. Is there a way of putting amendment to this to, and I'll let someone else make the amendment, add the appropriate amount of money coming from Free Cash in order to correct it, as see fit between the property owner and the town? Do you understand the question?
I, I think we would need more firm number to be able to actually put that into a motion. Mr. Netto, and then Mr. Latimer.
John Netto, Precinct 9. Mr. Moderator, I'd amend the Article 2, grant the spending of twenty thou, not to exceed $20,000 from Certified Free Cash to fix this problem that the Town of Falmouth created, and that this duly-elected body has the authority to do so, and that's my amendment, up to $20,000. And that's my amendment, up to $20,000 to fix Article 9 as the homeowner is requesting.
Okay, we have an amendment of $20,000 from Certified Free Cash. Discussion on the amendment, Mr. Latimer.
Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. I was listening to Mr. O'Brien. Just before he took himself away from the microphone, he said something about whether this taking for $3,000 would be legal. As a lawyer, I hear there a lawsuit. And I can guarantee you that if Mr. O'Brien chooses to challenge this taking in court, it will cost a lot more than $3,000, probably a lot more than $20,000. So I would go along with what the moderator is saying, what Mr. Netto was saying, let's authorize $20,000, see if that'll do it and make the problem go away.
Further discussion on the amendment. Back right, and then Mr. Lowell. The woman with the white mask, yeah, and then Mr. Lowell.
Andrea Thorold, Precinct 6. I am always wary when we make big changes on town meeting floor because it's not necessarily something I've had a chance to think through carefully. So I had two questions with this. One is I heard something about the differences between a license and an easement, and I want to know if this amendment would clarify that enough that that issue goes away. And the second thing I would like to know the answer to is, will any of these changes in the amendment satisfy any of the issues with the Americans for Disabilities Act? Would we be potentially still in non-compliance? And what would that mean to the town?
Mr. McConney? Or Mr. Duffy, or both?
Yes, first part of the question is the license versus the easement. That's something that would have to work out with the property owner. If the town does fix the driveway opening, put the driveway openings, and we still have the issue of it being on private property, so we'd have to work out the license issue and the easement issue with the homeowner. The second part of it is if the sidewalk is taken out and put back in, where it is now with the opening to the driveway, then it would be constructed and it would still fall under the ADA, and it would comply.
Ms. Cool, you were on my original list. Do you want to be on the amendment list as well? Okay.
Nick Lowell, Precinct 5. I'm not exactly sure what we're voting on here, because the original amendment calls for taking this property by eminent domain or adding $20,000. I'm a little confused. I think probably a lot of people are confused. The acoustics in here are terrible. I would like to support the concept of making this right. And I would ask that we vote the amendment down, we vote the recommendation down, and we bring this back in November with a proper figure, a proper plan, and something that we can all support. Thank you.
Ms. Cool.
Thank you. Annie Hart Cool, Precinct 6. I just, thank you, Nick. I was going to say the same thing. I believe that every citizen of Falmouth deserves access to their house, and it's appalling to me that this man has gone 20 years without easy access to his house because of a sidewalk that was a mistake. So let's get it right. Bring it back to us in November.
Further discussion on the amendment.
Laura Peterson, Precinct 3. We have the benefit of having Mr. O'Brien here, and instead of this going back behind closed doors, I'd like to hear from him if the $20,000 would be satisfactory, because I didn't hear from him in the beginning exactly what he was looking for. So let's find out. I mean, we have the ability to do it now, and I'm familiar with his house, and I want to know. It's always interested me because I didn't know anybody lived there. So I'm happy to know that there is somebody living there. Looking forward to the landscaping and the walkway and everything else, but will the $20,000 be enough?
I don't know. Mr. O'Brien, did you want to address that, or it's up to you?
I think the amount is a very close figure. That amount isn't determined by me, though. The amount is determined by the Town of Falmouth and Lawrence Lynch, who seems to have the contract with the town for doing the work. My issue is to get the sidewalk straightened out and the curb cuts in for safety reasons and for access reasons, and that has delayed any landscaping in the front of the house, which is what we want to continue to do. And I hope we can take care of it tonight, because in November, we get into the cold weather, and there's more time lost. We've lost an awful lot of time on this project. I'm happy to have served overseas for 10 years, but that was a killer in trying to keep this going. We're cranking along, we're working on it two, three days a week, whenever we can get down here. We want to get this done. I'm no longer young, I'm looking forward to retirement, and this is where we want to live. Thank you. Any questions besides that? So to be more direct on that, $20,000, that's completely up to Lawrence Lynch and the Town of Falmouth.
Go ahead. Microphone to my left, please.
Gina Torrelli, Precinct 2. I understand there's a second piece of this issue. There's the money, and then there's the easement versus a license. And it seems to me if we get the answer to that, we have a deal. So is the issue, are we, would you be willing to grant an easement? Because I can understand the town's concern about building $20,000 and not being able to have it.
That's an excellent question. If I refresh my memories, when I came back 10 years ago, I went to law school, specifically partly because of this. The difference between an easement and a license. A license is permission to use the land, permission that can be revoked at any time. An easement is the right to use the land and cannot be revoked. I'm not interested really in either. License would be my preferred. But the best solution to this is I would grant the land to the town, that 173 feet, square feet. I don't want an easement because I don't want the liability and the ownership of it anymore. An easement would be, I would still own it with the town having the rights. I'd prefer that the town own it. Now, these 20 years, this sidewalk spend on my property has left me very exposed at any time to a lawsuit. And if I continued with an easement, I suggest that I could still have one. No, I'm told that the town could come along and indemnify me. But I'm also told that the town only goes up to $100,000 can be sued for. Also, I know that if somebody saw that and saw the house that I've spent my lifetime building, I don't want it exposed or be out there as a target for anybody. So to answer the question, no easement, no license, I'm willing to grant the town that strip of land. But let's get the sidewalk straightened out and the curb cuts in.
Okay. I think we're ready to take a vote on this amendment. The amendment is to change the number, the dollar figure from 3,000 to 20,000. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Oh, let's try that again. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The pin of the chair is that the ayes have it by a majority. Okay. Now, the main motion is a two-thirds, because the main motion authorizes the select board to purchase or take by eminent domain a permanent easement. So all those in favor of the main motion as amended signify by standing, and the tellers will return the count. Mr. Latimer.
We voted for an amendment. The debate was not closed on the main motion just because we passed the amendment.
No, but I did close debate on the main motion, to take a vote on the main motion as amended.
But there are questions that are unanswered here that need to be answered. And Mr. O'Brien has strongly suggested one that needs to be made, another amendment that'd be changed from an easement to a taking. Okay? With it, and it also has to, the motion has to say, for the purpose of creating two curb cuts and taking the land, which I'm sure Mr. O'Brien would agree to, but other than that...
I think, other than negotiating on town meeting, don't pass this by two-thirds and let the administration fix it before November, and then we'll give them the money they need for it. That's the way this should be done. This type of stuff shouldn't be at town meeting. This is somebody not able to do their job, is what it is. All those in favor of the main motion to take, authorize the taking by eminent domain of a permanent easement and the appropriation of the money signify by standing, and the tellers will return the count. Two in the first division. Two in the second division. Two in the third division. All those opposed signify by standing, and the tellers will return the count. Second division. Oh, I'm sorry, third, sorry, third division. By a counted vote of six in favor and 173 opposed, the article does not pass. Article 15, Chair of the Select Board for the Main Motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 15 as printed.
Okay, the Select Board has a motion as printed. Now, did the petitioners want us to submit different language for the motion? Come on up, because you sent me emails and I don't know what you're doing, because this is not the language. Did you have different language than what is printed in the warrant booklet?
Not on this motion. It's a different motion.
Okay. So the main motion as printed. Ms. Silva.
We were going to present a power point. Do you want us to?
It's your article. You have 10 minutes to present.
Number 15 should appear on the screen magically. Yes, this is the Article 15 that we're using. I'm Sandy Faiman-Silva, Precinct 2.
Jerry Lasos?
Good idea, thank you.
I'm Sandra Faiman-Silva, Precinct 2.
Jerry Lasos, Precinct 7.
Next slide, please.
We would like to begin with a land acknowledgement as an example for the next proposal we have. We pause to acknowledge our connection to the ancestral homelands of the Wampanoag, the people of the first light. We give thanks for the opportunity to meet, live, work, learn, and pray on these traditional homelands. We pay our respect to their elders and hope to honor all Indigenous peoples' past, present, and future.
Next slide, please. This is the article as printed, to see if the town will vote to replace the holiday Christopher Columbus Day on the second Monday of October with Indigenous Peoples' Day or take any other action related thereto. And we will be speaking briefly about this article. Next slide, please. I'm just going to give a little bit of history. We are living in a time when it is no longer okay to disrespect, to discriminate, to disempower, to deny truth. And yes, we can no longer honor someone who does not deserve our respect or admiration. Now is the time to end fictions and to honor historical truth. Article 15 is not meant to disrespect Italian-Americans or anyone who lives in our nation. Unfortunately, the stories told to us as children about Columbus and Columbus Day are not true, and now we must correct that record. Misrepresentations, untruths, and historical fabrications are hurtful, demeaning, and painful to our Native American sisters and brothers and to all Americans. The sad fact is that Columbus's legacy was tyrannical, and the encounter between Columbus and Native Americans was brutal and unconscionable. He, his men, and those on subsequent voyages of exploration committed atrocities against Indigenous peoples in a quest for gold, riches, slaves, and land. Atrocities that are akin to mass extermination, possibly killing 90 million or more in the first 100 years. Generations of historical trauma have been suffered by Indigenous people and persist even today, a legacy we can no longer ignore. In light of the painful truths of the history of the conquest and Columbus's own part in it, we respectfully ask the town meeting vote to change the name of the holiday celebrated on the second Monday of October to be called Indigenous Peoples' Day henceforth. Mr. Jerry Lasos, member of Tongva Tribe, Tonga, the Indigenous tribe of Los Angeles, will now share his own testimony.
Ms. Silva, we just need to take a quick procedural vote. Ms. Silva, the gentleman doesn't live in Falmouth, correct? The gentleman doesn't live in Falmouth, correct?
Yes.
Oh, he does live in Falmouth. Okay. I thought you said he didn't.
Next slide, please.
I got caught on it last time.
I'm Jerry Lasos. I'm a member of the Tongva, the Indigenous tribe of Los Angeles. The Spanish arrived and contacted our tribe in 1542, and since then, there's been the generational historical trauma, one of which includes burying the name of the oppressor. Our tribe was taken to the San Gabriel Mission and renamed Gabrielino. We prefer the Indigenous name Tongva. Next slide, please. My grandmother, Rose Lasos, was Mission-born in 1887. There was a time during the Gold Rush where... There was a time during the Gold Rush where Governor Peter Jennings made the statement that it was a sad fact that the extermination of the American Indian was going to result. And at that time, in a twenty-year period, sixteen thousand Native Americans were killed in California, and my grandmother was born not much longer after that time period and made us, as a family, to promise never to bury her on that mission. We are survivors, are, as are many of the local Mashpee-Wampanoag Trial members, and we moved here as a result of my daughter, also named Rose Lasos, born 100 years after my grandmother. She's a biomedical mechanical engineer in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and brought us to this area, which we love. So, we're here for a purpose, and she just granted us with our first granddaughter, now five months old.
Next slide, please. I'm going to share some comments that were in our Falmouth Enterprise just last Friday by Town Meeting Member Eric Turkington, and I'll read a few sentences. "In the space of sixty-five years between 1620 and 1685, all of the land now comprising the town of Falmouth went from being Wampanoag territory, described in a 1648 deed as Sukonset Town, the place where Indians inhabit, to becoming entirely the property of our English colonists forbears. Colonists executed deeds of sale of their land to Indians who had no authority, and they had no authority to sell any land to anyone, and little understanding of what they were signing." Next slide, please.
"We respectfully ask you to consider these facts and honor the memory of the first Americans by changing the name of the holiday we celebrate on the second Monday in October to Indigenous Peoples' Day. I just wanted to mention that I work with the Mashpee-Wampanoag Education Department. I'm working with local schools, local colleges, and trying to make a difference in so that our students can see themselves in their curriculum and be a part of everyday learnings as they go through school. I want to thank you very much."
And we'd be happy to entertain questions.
Discussion on Article fifteen. Mr. Mancini?
Mark Mancini, Precinct Eight. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to put forward an amendment to this article. I sent it earlier to the town clerk, but it would be to say, to see if the town will vote to recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day on the third Monday of March. And I picked this day for a specific reason. And despite my name being Mancini, I really don't have any Italian heritage. My family's been here since Plymouth Colony. But four hundred years ago, on March 22nd, was when Massasoit walked into Plymouth Colony with the Wampanoag tribe and they established...
Mr. Mancini, could you hold on a second? IT, that's not the amendment. Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Massasoit and his, you know, the elders of the Wampanoag tribe walked into Plymouth Colony and they established a peace treaty. And that peace treaty lasted fifty years. And in that time, that's unheard of. I mean, World War I, that peace treaty only lasted a few years before World War II started. So I think that's a much better day to represent with our local heritage and giving to the indigenous people, you know, recognition for that. The other part with Columbus Day, we can't erase our history. He was who he was, he did bad things, but he was also a man of his time. I cannot judge him based off of the standards we live in today. He was by far not even the worst of his time. And the biggest thing he brought to this country that has just, just decimated the indigenous population that was here was disease. He didn't do it on purpose, and I think that's an important lesson we can learn, that sometimes discovery can really... If you don't think about what you're doing first, you can have unintended consequences that are bad. So I think it's important to remember Columbus, remember his day, remember the bad that happened with it, learn from it. If you forget your, if you forget your past, you're doomed to repeat it again. So, that's my spiel.
Okay, we have an amendment to make the third Monday of March Indigenous Peoples' Day.
May we respond?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'll put you on the list, so we can start there, and then Mr. Latimer. Go ahead, go ahead, you go first, and then Mr. Latimer.
As far as not doing things on purpose intent that had such devastating circumstances, I know of no Native American family that hasn't suffered for generations, that continues to suffer. And working with youth, I think it's important that we give them a sense of who they are and that many of the atrocities that were placed upon them were not something that was part of who they are, and that we're still in that healing process. And we feel that this goes a long way towards the healing process.
And I also just wanted to comment about intent. I'll read some text from Bartholomew de las Casas, a Spanish priest who wrote a book fifty years after the first voyage of Columbus and was an eyewitness to the carnage that was perpetrated by other conquistadors. And what has been called the first modern genocide. I quote, "My eyes have seen these acts so foreign to human nature that now I tremble as I write. They, the conquistadors, attacked the towns and spared neither the children nor the aged, nor pregnant women, nor women in childbed, cutting them to pieces as if dealing with sheep in the slaughterhouse." As I mentioned, it's estimated that as many as ninety million, ninety percent of indigenous people died within the first hundred years of the encounter. And there certainly was intent to exterminate the first nation's people in the Western Hemisphere."
Mr. Latimer?
Richard Latimer, Precinct One. Unlike Mr. Mancini, although my name is Latimer, I am half-Italian. On my mother's side, I am a Mabryno. I am proud of that, but I am not proud of Christopher Columbus, or Cristoforo Colombo. And the excuse that he was a man of his time, well, that is just the problem. That is what we are rejecting, the ethics of that time. There were people, as we've heard with this one priest who saw the carnage and wrote about it, there were people in the church who objected to this. However, the Pope issued a bull saying, "The doctrine of," get this, "discovery, conquest, and conversion." Hence, we had these missions that were really concentration camps because they were going to save the souls of these native peoples who they were murdering. It was, that's what's being honored when we honor Christopher Columbus, not the man, but we're honoring that time which deserves no honor. By the way, by the time it got into this country in the nineteenth century, when we were expanding to the West, well, forget all about that conversion nonsense, it was just, oh, by then, it was the Supreme Court of the United States, I forget the name of the case, said, "Oh, it's discovery and conquest, that's international law now." And that's what has caused most of the troubles that we've seen in this world, not just in America. So I think, as small a gesture as this really is, I think it's a gesture that has to be made because it has to give a message to the people who are coming up in our schools, for example, that to understand what's going on today in terms of the wars we've had, the wars of exploitation that we've had, it stems from this era when Christopher Columbus discovered America as if there weren't already civilizations here that were at least as advanced as the civilizations that gave rise to the European peoples. Thank you.
Ms. Welch?
Kelly Welch, Precinct Two, speaking as a town meeting member, not from the school committee. Although I appreciate Mr. Mancini's attempt at finding some compromise, in his statement, he said, "Discovery has unintended consequences." And what we're trying to do here is to move away from this idea of discovery. You can't discover a place that has been inhabited by thousands, for thousands and thousands of years. And we need our kids to be learning about Indigenous Peoples' Day, recognizing it as a true holiday, and learning about the actual events that transpired, not having this skewed view that somehow someone from Europe came and discovered the place that we currently are. Please vote this down.
Gentleman on my left.
I'm Charles Rader from Precinct Two, Forty-four Elvira Avenue. Article fifteen has two separate ideas. The first, Indigenous Peoples' Day would recognize and honor Native Americans. I understand, support recognizing the important contributions of the first people to live here, and I surely acknowledge the injustices they discovered, or they suffered, and in some cases, still continue to suffer. Celebrating an Indigenous Peoples' Day is due to them, long overdue. The second idea is to stop celebrating Columbus Day. Other ethnic groups in America have also contributed to our nation and also have, to various extents, been unjustly treated. I'm thinking here of Italian Americans. Many Italian Americans see ending Columbus Day as a cultural insult. I really do not believe that the way to the future is to trade one cultural insult for, one cultural insult for another. Of course, there are other Italians who would come to anybody's mind as great contributors to civilization, great artists, scientists, musical composers, et cetera. We could have honored Italian Americans in many other ways. But Italians in America can also remember Sacco and Vanzetti. Italians were often called WAPs. They were excluded from neighborhoods and associations. They were lumped together with the mafia. They suffered religious discrimination. Okay, this was not nearly as bad as what the Americans, American Indians, suffered. But it should be regretted. The Italian historical figure most celebrated in America is Christopher Columbus. It's true that Columbus, a man of his own century, brought horrors of that century with him to the New World. Yes, Columbus was guilty of that. But he came from a world which considered persecuting non-Christians to be a virtue. While Columbus was on sea, not having yet reached the New, the New World, the same Spanish rulers who financed his expedition expelled all the Jews from Spain. Not too long after that came the Spanish Inquisition, a religious bloodbath. Many Europeans were still serfs, a condition not that much different from slavery. But those horrors of the fifteenth century aren't why people remember Columbus. They remember his voyage of discovery. Italian Americans, for the most part, take pride in that, not in a genocidal treatment of the Indians. This year, near Boston's North End neighborhood, which is the center of Italian culture, there's growing pressure to rename Christopher Columbus Park. The Columbus statue in the park has been repeatedly vandalized. It's now in storage somewhere because nobody can stop the vandalization. Community leaders in the North End describe that Columbus statue as an homage to Italian Ameri, Italian immigrants...
The gentleman's time has expired.
I have one more paragraph, may I?
I can, I can put you back on the list to speak again for two minutes.
I don't even need two minutes, thank you.
Mr. Dufresne? Mr. Dufresne, did you want to speak on the amendment? And then Mr. Hargreaves?
If I may? I'm sorry, if I may over here?
I'll put you on the list if you want to speak.
Adrian Dufresne, Precinct Two. I was very upset when I read my warrant to find that this article was proposed for approval by the leading board of Select Room. It's actually an insult to me in my almost a hundred years, and most of that spent in my lifetime here in Falmouth. If the attempt is to create a legal holiday for indigenous, I hope I pronounce it right, people over what Christopher Columbus did back in 1600, this is not the format to do it. What we should be looking at, in your explanation, the approval of this article is largely symbolic. If it's symbolic, why the hell does it say on the first line to see if the town of Falmouth will vote to replace the holiday Christopher Columbus Day? So you people voted this to eliminate Christopher Columbus Day and replace it with Indigenous Peoples' Day? Is this something that we should be doing in these times of crisis for the town of Falmouth? A petition article comes before you and takes away a legal holiday, and then you people put down the explanation that it's largely symbolic? I don't think it belongs in this town meeting. And I would have no problem if the indigenous people were clearly described at a public meeting at their efforts over the history of Cape Cod and find out who they are, where they came from, what they did. So far, it's a nice long word, but it really doesn't say too much about who they are. I've seen a lot of bad guys in the last, say, fifty or sixty years in my involvement in the town of Falmouth. So I don't know if I am honoring those people in this description of indigenous people. My father was a migrant from Canada. He came over with his six brothers, crossed the line, probably illegally, and all went to work in the mills of upstate New York. And then they migrated down into New Bedford here. Were they indigenous people for New England? I'm, I'm going to ask this town meeting to really vote against, against this type of wording in a special town meeting. And maybe with the recommendation that if the Mashpee people want to be recognized on a holiday of their own, I can probably look back, because I have some very close friends that, Earl Mills, for Christ's sake, and I go back sixty years, thirty years. And if they want a legal holiday of their own, fine. But you're wording, you people up there on the stage, to see if the town will vote to replace the holiday Christopher Columbus Day. Thanks for listening to me, and I hope...
Columbus Day. Thanks for listening to me, and I hope this is not something that we're going to try to rewrite history and eliminate some of the history that could only lead to bad feelings later on. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Mr. Hargraves. Mr. Hargraves.
Peter Hargraves, Precinct Nine. I'm baffled by this article. I did some research. I thought it was a good chance to refresh my understanding of history, and I found things I didn't know anything about. But one thing I learned was Christopher Columbus never met a Native American. He never set foot on the North American continent. Yet, we celebrated our first Columbus Day or actually celebrated Christopher Columbus's exploits in 1792. It wasn't institutionalized as a patriotic American holiday with honoring Italian-American immigrants until mid-century, last century. But as I read further, it was even more disturbing. You know, I know recently we've been through a lot in the establishment of Juneteenth and recognizing what people have been through and how they've been oppressed in this country. But there are people in here who are old enough to remember when other people were oppressed in this country. Unfortunately, we have a long legacy of hatred. In fact, what I learned was that the first, that anti-American, or anti-immigrant nativists sought, were the first who sought to eliminate Columbus Day. And that's because it was associated with immigrants from Catholic countries, and Irish and Italian, who had the Fraternal Knights of Columbus organization, were basically, by the Ku Klux Klan and others, who, they were opposed to the celebration and monuments to Columbus because they thought that it increased Catholic influence in the U.S., which was supposed to be a Protestant country. Imagine that. And so, there's a social and political aspect to this, which is very disturbing. And, but, the other part of this, which leads me to not support this article, is the modern opposition to Columbus Day is rooted in political ideology that says Indigenous Peoples' Day should be established around the world, established and promoted, but it's being done by political activists. And I assume, putting the best face on all this information and the good intentions of the people of Falmouth, because Falmouth really is a nice place and we try to do the right thing, I assume that this article is not about bigotry. It's not intended to take down somebody who was established as, in memory of Italian-American and other immigrants, but rather, it was established or proposed to honor the Wampanoag, our local Native Americans. You know, that's not indigenous people. This is not a political cause. I do not stand or support political activism in town meeting in Falmouth. And so, I know there might be an amendment on the floor. I'm not clear. I am certainly aligned with the comments that I've heard here about honoring the Wampanoag. And I would vote to establish a Native American Day on the Fourth Friday of November, the day after Thanksgiving, when people are off anyway, and we could create our own customized local observation of our local Native Americans, the Wampanoag. I am not for signing up for political causes at town meeting.
The question that's on the floor is the amendment to make the third Monday of March Indigenous Peoples' Day. Mr. Lassos? Go ahead. Mr. Lassos?
I'm a veteran, and I had the honor of serving in Italy. And I understand what a beautiful culture it is. And I believe that what we're trying to do is not replace. We're trying to make sure that, this is definitely something. I myself am not Mashpee Wampanoag, but we know that the tribe stands behind it. As we work with the, as I said, the Mashpee Wampanoag Education Department, I've met many of the leaders of the tribe. I'm working closely with the tribe. It really is intended to honor the locals, the Mashpee Wampanoag. In addition, we hope to have students be part of the telling of their story. There is a, the Plymouth Four Hundred put out a Massachusetts Chronicles, which some of the members of the tribe helped write. These are articles in the form of newspaper articles, a history, and they are in every school in the state of Massachusetts. And I think that is an effort to make sure that the healing that is needed is taking place in our classrooms, in our communities, and that our stories are being told. The names of counties, rivers, canals. We walk along Cape Cod, and we constantly see these name places. The Language Reclamation Project of the Mashpee Wampanoag wants students involved in telling those stories, in creating videos in which they tell their stories and help people learn what those places mean and how, what they mean to the Mashpee Wampanoag. So I think the trend nationally and internationally has been towards healing. And that's, I think that's primarily the goal, is healing.
Ms. Lichtenstein?
Thank you. Les Lichtenstein, Precinct Eight. I have no Italian ancestors. There are Chumash, which are a California tribe in my family. I want to support the article. I think town meeting should do something positive. I think it's time to stop demonizing. A lot of bad things have happened, and we can spend our lifetime dragging them out and talking about them. Let's talk about positive things. Let's teach our kids the positive things, and let's have Indigenous Peoples' Day that's theirs, not dragged down or put in slew of or because of or something else. I think that an Indigenous Peoples' Day for their own is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Burnell.
Jimannell, Precinct Two. I go along with Mr. Dufresne and Mr. Peter Hargraves, but I have a question for council. Is council aware of the principle of free, prior, and informative consent as it relates to the indigenous people?
No.
I'm sure the petition is out. I just, my question is, it seems if we embrace this holiday, bring in Article seventeen, I think it's connected, do we put ourselves in jeopardy? I mean, this is a worldwide, it's going worldwide on the indigenous people, and it's a good thing, but I do worry about down the road. And I don't think it'd end here tonight. I think it's going to be coming back, coming back, and coming back. And I just wonder, if we embrace it with a holiday, and every town meeting or every public gathering, we have to say that this is their homeland, do we leave ourselves open for an unenviable position if there was ever litigation?
So we got the woman with the white, somebody with the white shirt, yep.
Sherri White, Precinct Eight. So I believe what we're supposed to be discussing here is the amendment, not the article itself. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And my understanding is the amendment, the current amendment on the floor, is to change the article to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day on the third Monday of March. Is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
Okay. And I appreciate, as someone else said, Mr. Mancini's attempt to try to reach some kind of compromise. I would simply like to point out that this is changing the second, what is it, second Monday of October to Indigenous Peoples' Day is something that has happened with a number of cities in the state of Massachusetts, and the state is also getting a bill that addresses this. So I believe we should reject the amendment, keep the article as written, and that will keep us in sync with other efforts to make Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of October. So I encourage you to reject the amendment and approve the article. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Peterson. I'll add you, Sandy, to the list.
Laura LaRusso-Petersen, Precinct Three. I think I want to point out, as far as the amendment goes, I've learned a lot about being an ally. And one of the important things about being an ally is you don't tell oppressed people how they can be helped. You let the people that you're serving and the people that are coming to you, they tell you what they need. So what we're hearing is that students want to feel good about themselves. People that have been oppressed and people that have had things happen to them that have been completely out of their control want to feel good about themselves and know their history. And so they're asking to change Christopher Columbus Day, not another day or another day that other people in this room think would be great days to change, but Indigenous People Day instead of Christopher Columbus Day. And just pay attention to what's coming up for you with feelings around this, and what you're thinking about, and how it makes you feel. And know that that is a very small percent compared to what oppressed people feel every single day. And kids deserve to know the truth about our history and know that they're valued and that they're important too. And that doesn't take away, it's not pie. It's not like somebody else loses because somebody else is being built up. We can all be built up. So I just ask you to vote down this amendment, and just notice how you're feeling, and notice why. And the intention of this amendment is to make people feel valued. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Parker. Want to use that one?
Bob Baker, Precinct Four. It's very, very difficult to rewrite history. When you think about how many of our early founding fathers were slave owners, we think an awful lot of Andrew Jackson is our first strong president, and he was the absolute worst president we've ever had when it came to indigenous people. You know, his history is horrible. We think an awful lot of the great emancipator Abraham Lincoln, but there's many, many times when Lincoln was very, very clear that he did not believe in equality at all. He had plans, which he couldn't carry out, to send the freed former slaves to islands in the Caribbean. He did not believe in slavery, but he did not believe in equality, you know, of people. And we can go on even to more modern times. I mean, people like Ford and Lindbergh, who are heroes, were anti-Semites who supported Adolf Hitler. The, what we're going through, other places have gone through, a town not too far away from us has dealt with this, the town of Amherst, Massachusetts. Lord Jeffrey Amherst was a British general in the 1750s, who was one of the first people to practice chemical warfare when he gave blankets infected with smallpox to the Native Americans. And, you know, this, you know, people have known this for a long time, but recently, the town of Amherst has dealt with this. And the town chose not to change their name. UMass Amherst chose not to change its name. However, Amherst College chose to change the name of a charming hotel they own from the Lord Jeffrey Inn to something else, which I forget. And Amherst College was always known as the Lord Jeffs. Well, now they're the Wooly Mammoths, you know. So this is, this is an issue that seems to be coming up over and over again. We're ripping down statues, most of which probably deserve to be ripped down. But I'm just not sure that this is the place to do it. And I'm really not even sure, if I listen to all this, which way I'm even going to vote, although I do appreciate all the arguments. But it's very difficult to rewrite history. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Silva.
Thanks. Thank you. We're not trying to rewrite history with all due respect. We're trying to tell history. And thank you very much for the comments you just made. But we are simply trying to educate the audience about the legacy of Christopher Columbus that we didn't, I didn't learn about when I was in elementary school. Most of you didn't learn about it either, when you were in elementary school. We celebrated the legacy of a man who is associated with genocide. There is substantial evidence from firsthand accounts of how the conquistadors conducted themselves. It may have been in the name of religious righteousness to spread Christianity in this newfound territory. But by our 21st century standards, we define that as genocide. This has nothing really to do with Italian-Americans. And the holiday, as was mentioned, Columbus Day, was originated in the 1930s during a time of xenophobia, not only against Italians, but against all Eastern and Southern Europeans, Catholics and Jews, which we must fully acknowledge. But as was mentioned, this is an international movement to tell history authentically, as it has occurred. We cannot live in a world where we are living in a bubble of self-deception. And we must take care of our brothers and sisters. Native Americans are the poorest ethnic minority in the United States. They have the worst health outcomes. They have the highest rates of suicide. They have the highest rates of youth suicide. They have the lowest level of, the highest level of infant mortality and the lowest level of life expectancy. This is the legacy of oppression. And unless we do it, do something one step at a time to improve the lives of our brothers and sisters who need us most, even if it's only by a simple transformation of the name of a holiday that we call a holiday to celebrate Christopher Columbus, which is, I don't want to celebrate Christopher Columbus because I know his history. So we are asking this audience to vote to embrace a name change of a holiday that is not justifiably a holiday. It is not a day that we can celebrate a man who is associated with genocide. I happen to be Jewish, and I would feel exactly the same way if... same way if, you know, God forbid, we started wanting to celebrate the birth of Adolf Hitler. And this is really a step too far, in my opinion. We are, when the revelation occurs, when you, when you know something about history, you cannot deny it. You cannot go back. When you become, when your consciousness is raised by knowledge, you cannot go back and plead ignorance.
Okay, Ms. Silva.
Thank you.
You've got four minutes on that one. Ms. Lenardi? Nope. Okay. Ms. Rhodes? Mr. Latimer, you're on the list, but you've already spoken twice.
Lynn Rhodes, Precinct Eight, and I have to. Can we move the question on the amendment, please?
Okay. We have a motion to close discussion just on the amendment. All those in favor of closing discussion on the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It says the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question is closed on the amendment. The question will now come on the amendment to make the third Monday of March Indigenous Peoples' Day. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's printed that shares that the noes have it by a majority. Going back to my original list, actually, Mr. Latimer, you're the next on the original list. Mr. Bidwell, you're on the list.
1492. Columbus sailed the ocean blue. That's what I learned in, what was it, third grade, fourth grade? Well, that was rewriting history, making Columbus into some kind of heroic figure who was, did this wonderful thing, unqualified good thing of discovering America full of people that had been there for millennia. That's the rewriting of history. What this is about is about telling the whole story and doing so in a way that recognizes the good and the bad. Yes, we can recognize Columbus, that Columbus was a great navigator, yes. So was Henrik Hudson. But that is not worth naming a holiday for. What Columbus represented was not anything heroic. It was a cynical corruption of Christian values, by the way. There were many in the church who opposed this, but the, this was not simply Italians. Columbus was sailing for the Spanish crown. And the Spanish were the ones that committed the atrocities enabled by the Pope. So what we are rejecting here by not teaching Columbus as the hero, what we were doing is we are telling history, the full history, and doing so with contemporary values. We are people of our time. And our time can and must reject those values that drove the conquest of America. Conquistador means conquest. We have to reject those values because if we don't, we're going to be condemned to ever increasingly devastating wars, and we cannot afford that. And we need to raise the consciousness of the children in this town, as has been done in other towns, so that eventually, perhaps, you know, the full story will become part of the national dialogue. It's called critical thinking. You don't just, you don't, it's not, critical thinking isn't finding fault and blaming. It's looking at the whole picture and allowing students to make up their minds. Look at the good, yeah, Columbus was a good navigator. Look at the bad. Look what, what his navigation led to. Make up your own minds, but at least be given the full story. And that's what this is about. Not, it's not rewriting history.
Mr. Bidwell.
Todd Bidwell, Precinct Four. Question, I'm confused by the explanation as that it's largely symbolic. And my question would go to businesses. What would be expected of businesses as far as auto dealerships, appliance stores, tourism businesses, Columbus Day weekend specials, that clothing stores, et cetera, might very well be promoting? What would be the expectation of the business community?
Mr. Bidwell, Frank Duffy Town Council. Columbus Day is a state holiday. It was declared a holiday by the Act of the Legislature and also by an order of the governor. It will remain a state holiday. If we choose to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day in Falmouth, I don't think it will affect any commerce activity whatsoever. If a business is open, it'll stay open.
Someone here from the school department, can you tell us if that's a timer or are we just sitting too still? We don't have someone? Yeah, why don't you go while we figure out what's going on with the lights here?
Doc, can I go ahead?
Yes.
Dr. Famous Silva mentioned some pretty devastating statistics. But one I wanted to point out is that Native Americans have served in the military at a greater percentage than any other group. We are Americans, and we would like our story told. It's the bottom line.
Peter, could we find someone that could deal with the light issue? I don't know who. I don't know who, okay. Tom's got it. Thank you. I know who it is at Lawrence School. I don't know who it is here. Okay, next on my list is the woman in the back row there? Yep.
Tracy Waggett, Precinct Nine. I'd like to say thank you, first of all, for bringing this to our attention. But I'd like to reiterate that celebrating a holiday is what's at question here, and not whether Christopher Columbus should be part of history. He is part of the history, and he can stay in the history books. Let's choose to celebrate Indigenous Peoples' Day. And hopefully, when the history is written of today, we will be on the right side. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fenwick.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct One. Pretty much what Ms. Wagner said. But what I would like to make sure, several people have said there's confusion on the explanation. And I kind of wanted to tell you folks to quit while you were ahead. So maybe this is symbolic. I heartily endorse the move to make the second, wait, what are we, second Monday of October be Indigenous Peoples' Day. But then you go on to say it's a counter-celebration. I don't think there's such a thing. A counter-celebration, to me, means a protest. So I want to underscore what Ms. Peterson said, accentuate the positive, go with the positive, embrace this new day, and celebrate it. Just don't mention Christopher Columbus again.
Ms. Segal?
Deborah Segal, Precinct Six. I'd like to call the question.
Okay, we've got another motion to move the question on the main motion. All those in favor of closing discussion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's printed that shares that the ayes have it by the two-thirds, and the question will now come on the main motion as printed. All those in favor of the main motion as printed signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. All those in favor signify by standing in the tellers or return account. Second Division, 24. Third Division. Thirty-eight. First Division. Forty-eight. All those opposed signify by standing in the tellers or return account. And the First Division. Oh, I mean, the Second Division, twelve. Third Division. Twenty-six. First Division. Nineteen. By a count of vote of 110 in favor and 57 opposed, the main motion passes. Article 16. The recommendation by the select board is indefinite postponement. Do we have a positive motion someone wants to put on the floor? Yep, Mr. Flag.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Zweig. I'm from Precinct.
You gotta get closer to the. Is your main motion as printed?
Yes. I'd like to put a positive motion on the floor for this article.
As printed?
As printed.
As printed, okay. Mr. Zweig.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ron Zweig, and I'm one of the, one of the petitioners on this article. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to advise the Board of Selectmen to create a domestic partnership bylaw for the town of Falmouth, Massachusetts, or do or take any action on the matter." Much of the technical content in this presentation was derived from a presentation by the Miller Law Group. I've also been in contact with the Assistant Attorney General in the Municipal Law Unit of the state, who clarified that if a domestic partnership bylaw were forwarded to be considered by the Attorney General, the bylaw would be considered if it came from the town of Falmouth through affirmation of town meeting. So just to go over, I, the slides, presentation is somewhere. Okay, next. Okay, thank you. Next. So what is domestic partnership in Massachusetts? Their legal benefits. They include quite a few things: hospital visitation rights, family healthcare coverage, correctional facility visitation rights, access to a dependent child's school records, the right to remove a child from school for emergencies, bereavement leave, sick leave to care for a partner, shared employment benefits from a partner, and registered domestic partners entitled to the above without incurring costs and/or legal fees if they've entered into a domestic partnership. Those who register for domestic partnerships must be over the age of 18 and unmarried. The parties share living expenses. The parties are responsible for the well-being of each other and dependents. Both parties are mentally capable of entering into a contract. Both parties do not have a domestic partnership with someone else already. What is domestic partnership in Massachusetts? Such bylaws formulated and implemented on a town-by-town basis. In Massachusetts, these are municipal ordinances or bylaws. Some states have statewide laws that allow these, allow domestic partnerships. But in Massachusetts, it's done on a town-by-town basis. And the registration is done at town hall through the clerk's office. And also, the dissolution of a domestic partnership can be done through the clerk's office. Is it the same as being married? No. It's actually only recognized in municipality where enacted in Massachusetts. But a lot of the actions and entitlements that I mentioned a moment ago are really more related to your daily living situation or people's daily living situation. It's not a legal family, and they do not inherit each other's assets, particularly important for demographics, such as ours with, for example, children from prior marriages. So it's, it's, it's much, much simpler in terms of, of those prior commitments and, and those within the, within a domestic partnership. So in Massachusetts, I haven't surveyed all 351 towns. I've been called a number of them. And, and these are some, especially some nearby. But this is a, actually, something that is being enacted by municipalities across the state. And there have been a couple of them just this year that I'm aware of. In Arlington, the town meeting passed its domestic partnership bylaw on April 28, 2021, and submitted it to the Attorney General's Office for a decision. Boston, Brewster, Cambridge also passed a domestic partnership bylaw by its city council on March 8 of this year. And it was approved, it's already been approved by the Attorney General, and it's now active. People can enter into those partnerships in Cambridge, Nantucket, Somerville, Truro, to name a few. So in addition, regarding this, this article, it was reviewed by the Upper Cape Women's Coalition and the Falmouth Affirmative Action Diversity Committee, and they, they endorse, they have endorsed this article. Again, the main thing is that, the main purpose of this for our community is really to make people's lives easier when it comes to committed relationships, not harder. Thank you.
Discussion on Article 16. Yep. To my right, the microphone. Mr. Rafferty.
Stephen Rafferty from Precinct Two. I just want to clarify or get a fact here if I can. The Board of Selectmen does not need this body to advise them to create a bylaw. They can at any time create a bylaw to bring to this body for acceptance. Is that correct? That is correct. And further, should this body vote in the negative on this article, not to advise the selectmen to create a bylaw, the selectmen could still, should they so desire, create a bylaw. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any further discussion on Article 16? Mr. Hargraves?
Peter Hargraves, Precinct Nine. Thanks for the explanation, Ron. I, I just have kind of an administrative question. I guess that the state really files and maintains records of legal records. I guess that the state really files and maintains records of, legal records related to marriage and such. I'm not sure what the town does, but if this were a local issue, what kind of burden does it place on the town officers or the clerk? Where is this file maintained, and what's their responsibility, whoever is owning the files that record this partnership?
Could you repeat the question? I couldn't hear it clearly.
You don't understand the question?
I couldn't hear it clearly.
Oh, can you hear it better now?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So, I'm just wondering if this was a local domestic partnership bylaw, that's what you're asking for, right?
Yes.
Where would the records be kept, and who has the burden locally in our town administration of keeping them in an orderly manner and accessible and whatever other requirements there are to, you know, to make them a worthy public record? With the state and the marriage licenses and such, they have a whole process and procedure for storing and accessing that kind of information. But this, as I understand it, would just be a local, a local thing for Falmouth, right?
That's right.
So, how would that be managed?
Yeah, thank you. So, basically then, the town will keep a record of these people who have entered into these partnerships, and they will have a document showing that they are in a domestic partnership, and then can be availed of those privileges. And it is, it is quite simply not so different in a way. I mean, the state, when you get married, it's similar. You register with the town, and you file a marriage certificate, and it's recorded. But in this case, because of the way it's done in Massachusetts, it really is just applicable within the jurisdiction or the municipality in which it's done. So, it's done. There is a, there are very good examples from these other towns of how it's done. Truro, for example, has a very clear bylaw that explains in detail what you're asking. And so, they have, they've been enacted in these other towns and are being implemented.
Okay, Ms. Long.
We won't be, you know, reinventing the wheel, so to speak.
Ms. Long.
Hi, Sarah Long, Precinct Seven. When I saw this, it almost sounded like it was a solution looking for a problem. A couple of things. The health insurance. You can't, I don't think you can require, or I'm hoping this doesn't require, town businesses to provide health insurance to domestic partners. I'd looked at the Cambridge ordinance, and it only applies to the town itself. So, the sick leave, if I'm understanding correctly, the sick leave and the health insurance would be required to be provided by the town, which is a cost, you just have to accept it. But you're not going to require shaws, I think, to provide domestic relation health insurance for its associates. That's question one. Number two, while Falmouth Hospital will allow visitation, if this passes, I assume, if you go to Cape Cod Hospital, it's not going to happen, which just argues for what I think the town council recommended, which is a healthcare proxy, which, if you go to the hospital, they will do them for free. And I am concerned about the cost for the health insurance and the business aspect if, for some reason, we're expecting businesses to bear the cost for a domestic partnership. Could you help me with that?
Mr. Swig.
Yes, those are good points. I think that those are the kinds of questions, I think, that are, definitely are resolvable. And one thing is, is that I believe that even though it really functions in, officially it functions within Falmouth's jurisdiction, I think that if someone came with a domestic partnership certificate and showed up at Cape Cod Hospital, the hospital would likely honor it. And so, I think that there's a little more flexibility in that. And as far as insurance goes, these are factors that, that I think businesses would need to look into with regard to how far they would extend that, that coverage. So, these are things that could be put into the Falmouth bylaw to be, to be formed.
Okay, we almost ready on this one? Mr. Barker? All right, I'm going to do that from the chair. All those in favel of Article sixteen as printed signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. It's the pin of the chairs that the noes have it by a majority. Article seventeen. This recommendation of the Select Board is indefinite postponement. Ms. Silva?
May we have our PowerPoint, please?
I think this is the one that we have a different motion, correct? Ms. Silva, was this the one that we have the different motion, main motion? You email me something with red lines?
Yes, we have a revised substitute motion.
Okay.
May we have Slide Two, please?
All right. The land acknowledgement you see in front of you is an example. We read it before, but...
But can we, can we actually present the main motion to the town meeting members first?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand.
You need to present the motion to town meeting before we present.
Slide Three, please. This is the, I've made, in order to accommodate some of the objections that were proposed by the Select Board, we have revised the motion in a couple of ways. And on the screen, you see the original motion at the top, where I've made changes, and the lower section is the official motion. So, I will read it. "To see if the town will vote to institute a townwide policy whereby a statement shall be made at the beginning of Falmouth Town Meeting and Falmouth Public Schools graduations and voluntarily at town board and committee meetings and at other town of Falmouth and Falmouth Public Schools events, to respectfully acknowledge that the town of Falmouth is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Wampanoag tribe, who have inhabited and been custodians of this land, viewed as their sacred homeland for at least twelve thousand years, and take any additional action pertaining thereto."
That's the main motion.
Next slide, please.
A land acknowledgement goes back many, many centuries in Native American nations and communities. Today, land acknowledgements are used by native peoples and non-natives to recognize indigenous peoples who are the original stewards of the lands on which we now live. Making a land acknowledgement should be motivated by genuine respect and support for native peoples. Speaking and hearing words of recognition is an important step in creating collaborative, accountable, continuous, and respectful relationships with indigenous nations and communities. Many towns, businesses, organizations, universities, and school districts have adopted the practice of creating land acknowledgements. Next slide, please.
I'm again borrowing from Representative Turkington, from his article in The Enterprise this past week. Just to remind you that we have a long history of Native American presence in our own community. Falmouth was home to Wampanoag peoples, as I mentioned, for twelve thousand years or more. And what I want to just remind you is that these people lived in villages that we have names for today. We have borrowed and retained the names of the native villages of our town, and yet the original inhabitants have been virtually exterminated. Many of our village names are Wampanoag: Quissette, Sippowissette, Acapeske, Minont, Maganset, Tieticket, Wacoit, and some of our waters. Assumet Pond, Cunameset Pond, Mashacrit Pond, Creek, Gruze Pond, Squitig Harbor, Sakineset Hills, Chapacoit Island. And this acknowledgement is meant to bear witness to this history and to the legacy of honoring Mother Earth and honoring those people who came before, who gave so much so that we could enjoy this beautiful town of Falmouth. Next slide, please.
Falmouth Public Schools recently completed a land acknowledgement this month. It was a collaborative effort, very collaborative. There was a Falmouth Schools committee representatives and the Mashpee-Wampanoag Education Department. I was involved, but again, I share that I'm not Mashpee-Wampanoag. I was trying to help in the process. But there were Mashpee-Wampanoag members who made suggestions, listened to the original draft, and were very happy with what came forth. Next slide, please. Here is Falmouth Public Schools' land acknowledgement. And I know the tribal members talked about how they wanted more than just a statement. They wanted a living document. So, it says, "Falmouth Public Schools, Falmouth School Committee acknowledges that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Sakineset, Wacoit, Sippowisset, Tietacket, Chapacoit, as original stewards of what is now known as the town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. This land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves and our students about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people. In alignment of the core values of the Falmouth Public Schools, we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation." Next slide, please. In addition, the Falmouth Affirmative Action and Diversity Committee created a land acknowledgement. "We are standing on the ancestral lands of the Wampanoag people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider that many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that brings us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths." Next slide.
Again, we have presented these examples to give you a sense of why communities, businesses, cities and towns, corporations are adopting acknowledgement statements that they share with their members and guests and visitors to keep us mindful of our history and mindful of the legacy of that history on people who are our friends and neighbors and relatives, because these are the people that bear the pain of that history. And our friendship as non-native peoples, our acknowledgement as non-native peoples is a hand across from one community to another that says, "We are trying to understand, we are trying to know your history, as painful as it is to you, and to perhaps bring peace to you knowing that your history is being acknowledged." Next slide, please. Is that, that's the one we... Our proposal is to adopt the proposal that the public schools have adopted with some changes to make it more appropriate to the town of Falmouth generally. So, this is the proposal that we have, are suggesting.
Again, we acknowledge that we are gathering on the unceded ancestral land of the Wampanoag Nation. We recognize and respect the Wampanoag people, including those of Sakineset, Wacoit, Sippowisset, Tietacket, and Chapacoit, as original stewards of what is now known as the town of Falmouth, and honor their enduring relationship with this land. The land acknowledgement is an intentional act to counter the erasure of indigenous people and to demonstrate respect for their sovereign rights. We are committed to educating ourselves about the longstanding history of the Wampanoag people, and we pledge to build an ongoing partnership with the Wampanoag Nation." Next slide. I think that's it, sorry.
Thank you very much.
Okay, open for discussion. Yep, to my right.
Megan Henwald, Precinct Eight. I am on the Affirmative Action Committee, and we've been using that land acknowledgement at our meetings since the beginning of January. It helps us center and focus on what our committee is there to do. And I think it's important to bring history into the current day. I'll share an aside related to this. My wife never saw the movie. Shoot, it's the one about the funeral, like the kid who keeps pretending he's committing suicide. And it's really about death. So, he goes to funerals, he's obsessed with death. He can't, you know, he, he, you know, he can't stop thinking about it. But really, the movie is about life. In this acknowledgement, it's painful, it's about history, it's about history, but it's about the present. And we have the opportunity today to think of that history and be the best Falmouth that we can be with the Mashpee-Wampanoags and in this land that we inhabit. So, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Hargraves?
Peter Hargraves, Precinct Nine. One of the presenters earlier said, "Step by step," but I didn't realize we were taking two steps at one town meeting. I was going to read the land acknowledgement from the Affirmative Action and Diversity Community, Committee, and I'll do that again to start, because I think it sets an understanding of my comment. "We're standing on the ancestral lands of the Wampanoag people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths." Now, I had this at my disposal in formulating my comment. I did not have the one that was... I did not have the one that was shown on screen. And I guess if that was the school committee, I hope they had a legal review of the contents of that document. I know there are many lawyers here tonight. I am not one. And there are a lot of lawyers because there are a lot of different opinions about the law. But there is a commonly understood principle called eminent domain, where property is subject to the eminent domain of the state. But private ends need to give way to the public good if there is some public utility. And so, in that case, if this is done, the state is bound to make good the loss of those who lose their property. And so, I was fascinated by the concept of eminent domain and this article. And I consulted an attorney to find out, what does this mean? What it means is that these statements are basically acknowledgement by the leaders of the town of Falmouth and whoever utters them in a public forum that there's been an illegal taking of the land around us. And of course, what that leads to is, what was the fair value of the property? What were people denied? And what's the fair value for the use of the property or the continued use of the property? There's another international movement called reparations. And just like the previous article where we were discussing what is going on internationally, I, you know, have a lot of heart for oppressed people, and I try to do my bit. But I don't like to be roped into something like this where naive people are looking at and putting themselves in harm's way because this sets us up for lawsuits about reparations because of the illegal taking of our land. And there is an international treaty, which the United States is not part of. It's directed at the colonial adventures of mainly our European cousins. And if you read, if you go online and search this, and you can read, a lot of countries that were occupied and people oppressed by their own statement and testimony by their colonial masters, they are getting reparations through this treaty in Europe. Now, we're not part of it yet, but there are factors in the United States that are trying to get the United States to sign on to this treaty. This, to me, is a local version where we're putting ourselves in harm's way. And so, I think my time is up.
Time's up, yep, four minutes. Ms. Leonardy? Microphone back here? Yeah, if you could.
Amy Leonardy, Precinct 8. For both the moderator and the petitioner, can you put back up the language of the change to this article? And also reread it? You just went a little fast for me with the language change. And I want to be sure I'm clear. And I can't read it all the way back here. Thank you.
This one?
What you want to change it to? So where the language changed from every public meeting of town, meeting, town boards and committees and all that? Where that changed what it now includes?
Just read the bottom half of the slide again.
Oh, okay, sorry. I'll be honest with you. I've been honest all evening. The select board made a recommendation. And there were comments. There was at least one comment that people would, it would take too much time to make a land acknowledgement statement at each meeting of a committee or a select board, I would assume. In my humble opinion, I think that oppressed people deserve our time. And the minute or so that it would take to read an acknowledgement statement at the beginning of a meeting would be entirely appropriate.
Sandy, could you actually just reread it? Because that was her, she can't read it from back there.
Oh, you want me to read the?
She wanted you to reread the motion, please.
The revised version?
The motion, that's before town meeting.
Sorry. "To see if the town will vote to institute a townwide policy whereby a statement shall be made at the beginning of Falmouth Town Meeting and Falmouth Public Schools graduations and voluntarily at town board and committee meetings and at other Town of Falmouth and Falmouth Public Schools events, to respectfully acknowledge that the town of Falmouth is the traditional ancestral homeland of the Wampanoag tribe, who have inhabited and been custodians of this land, viewed as their sacred homeland for at least 12,000 years, and take any additional action pertaining there too." Sorry, it's getting late. I'm getting tired.
Brenda Swain, Precinct 6. I just want to ask a question based on Laura Peterson's comments. Is this language or will the statement involve Wampanoag folks in the crafting of the final statement?
The Falmouth Schools' land acknowledgement did have participation of the members of the Mashpee-Wampanoag Education Department, who are tribal members. There are also other members of the tribe who had the opportunity to speak this evening or to send a testimonial of support. And so, we know that the tribe is behind the land acknowledgement, the wording of the land acknowledgement. But the drafting of the original, really, there should be credit given to the Falmouth Schools Committee. They came with great ideas, with many of the thoughts. And the tribal representatives made a few suggestions which were incorporated into the final copy.
Judy Fenwick, Precinct 1. This is another one of those instances of a vast rewrite coming before town meeting without having the technology or the ability to talk about this and offer amendments or changes. Also, the broad sweep is still here that I think folks would have an objection to. I've got some ideas that perhaps all the elected boards could develop their own land acknowledgements. But those that are appointed by the select board should have to have a uniform statement going across. But again, I think this should be cleaned up and come back to town meeting in November. I had language, for instance, I was going to offer for tonight just to get an article through from indefinite postponement. Could I read my alternative to this motion? Make it an amendment with new language? But I can't give it to you because I can't go up there and cross things out on the screen.
Well, you can give it to us in writing, and then town meeting will decide if they understand it enough from just it being read.
Do you want me to go back to my seat and write it out in longhand?
Do you have it in writing there?
Well, all I've done is done deletions in the text that is in my warrant book because it's similar. That's what I mean about not having the technology.
Why don't you come up to the clerk and see if he can? I'm going to go to Mr. Noonan while we figure out if we can put an amendment on the floor here that...
John Noonan, Precinct 7. I too am concerned of the step-by-step that was mentioned earlier. I'm concerned that if we vote for this as a legal town meeting, elected by the people, to represent the people, that we are saying we are on Wampanoag property? And what is that going to do? Will that result in lawsuits? If we vote for this, I think we're opening ourselves up to lawsuits, many lawsuits. So I would encourage you to vote it down. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fenwick, you wanted to make a closing comment on the motion there.
So at this point, I would suggest that this be cleaned up, consulted more, and brought back to town meeting in November. But just one language I want to make sure that there is a change to. Wherever you refer to, "The town of Falmouth is the traditional ancestral homeland." It should read that "The town of Falmouth sits on the traditional ancestral homeland." That's very common language in land acknowledgements.
Get a blue shirt in the center section here.
Michael Holcomb, Precinct 9. I just wanted to address some of the comments that had been made about the idea of there being an eminent domain issue or suits to establish control of the land. There was, this is an issue that's been explored in great depth in Australia in terms of the idea of there being a native title and the idea that the land never had no owner. There is no such thing as a terra nullis or a no man's land. My understanding of that is that the traditional rule would be, continuous use would be required to establish a native title, which wouldn't be the case in most of Falmouth. And the idea of also being that, I would think, even if we were to pass the acknowledgement and an argument were to be made that there was an ability to establish a legal title based on historical indigenous control of the land, that at this point, the land would be passed to the current owner by the process of adverse possession of having been on the land and paid taxes on it to the town of Falmouth.
Andrea Thorold, Precinct 6. And tonight, I'm wearing two hats. So I'm also a member of the school committee. And I wanted to speak with that hat on first. And then I'll try to be clear when I switch back to my town meeting member hat for my own opinions. I'm really glad that everyone had the opportunity to view the land acknowledgement that we unanimously approved recently. And I do appreciate Mr. Lassos for walking us through the process that got us to that point. We so enjoyed working with you and the rest of the department in a very collaborative environment. That working group met twice and had important and honest discussions about what a land acknowledgement is and how to craft one that is meaningful. And as we're contemplating this, I just wanted to bring your attention to one of the elements that we are asked to consider. A land acknowledgement statement should not be or become a rote exercise. A land acknowledgement is more than just a statement that is presented to open certain functions. It should be deeper than that and be about developing a relationship with a tribe, with a tribal people that is a living commitment. And I think that is really what we are being asked to do here. Changing my hat because I'm going to get into opinion now. This is not the opinion of the school committee. While I see what we're doing here as a great first step, and I do recognize that some people have questions with changes that were made at the last minute. I'm a person who often feels that same way. And if I wasn't so involved in the process to this point, I may feel very differently. But I also want to encourage the public bodies that may be reciting such a statement to take it a step further and initiate a process to create communities and partnerships with indigenous people. So our decisions take into account the needs of all the residents of this town. The schools will be taking this step and hopefully continue to provide an example in this regard. Thank you.
Richard Latimer, Precinct 1. I'm not a land use lawyer. I'm a litigator. And I, as such, I'm familiar with the principle of Latchis. If there was a cause of action for unlawful taking of land, I would expect that the right to pursue that in court has long since expired. However, I do not know much about the law of eminent domain. And I would ask what town council's opinion on that question might be.
Mr. Duffy?
Mr. Latimer, Frank Duffy, Town Council. I think your comment about the doctrine of Latchis is well taken. The time for litigating the ownership of this land probably has long gone. I do not see an issue of eminent domain really being a part of this discussion. What you're asked to do is to see if the town will vote to institute a townwide policy. Now, remember, under the Falmouth Home Rule Charter, it is the Board of Select Board that has the authority to be the policymaking board of the town. So I would see that this statement is something that is, if you approve this article, is drafted by the select board. We did not participate with the schools when they drafted theirs. If the select board goes forward, we'll certainly look at these issues and try and incorporate them into a statement and make this appropriate.
Okay, and the center back there? Yep, with a green mask? Yep, with a green mask. Stand up so he can see you, please. Thank you.
This has been a very interesting evening. I think we've all had a lot to think about. What came to my mind is how all of the, so many, maybe not all, but so many of the topics and the issues tonight really are connected. They're connected to me by the fact that we are almost arguing things that maybe mean a lot to us in our lifetime. But what I think is coming clear is that what this evening was really about was our children and what we're teaching our children and what we're leaving our children. And I think whatever, you know, whatever issues have come up tonight, I think we're all going to go home and think very long and hard about maybe being a little selfish. What we have enjoyed in our lifetimes, what we've heard from school in third grade, fourth grade, those things that have been important to us growing up, they're important to us, and that's fine. But I think we have to think about the future and what we're leaving our children and teaching our children. And I love so many of the statements that were made tonight about what we want our children to learn about this country, about being a human being, the complexities of our history, not all good, not all bad. But we need to know the truth. And it's been a wonderful evening. I thank you all.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion as presented by the petitioner. All those in favor of the main motion signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Let's be sure that the noes have it by a majority. Article 18. The recommendation of the Finance Committee is indefinite postponement. And Ms. Silva, you're going to make the main motions on this?
Good evening. I hate to bore you again. I hope I'm not boring you. May we have the first slide, please? May we have the first slide, please? So this particular motion is what I am going to ask as that we divide the question. And I would like to introduce a main motion that addresses part of this article. And I will ask for a second motion when we complete our discussion of the first motion, if that's acceptable.
Sure. So what we're going to do is we're going to take two different votes here. We're going to have a main motion on the creation of the task force. And then after that main motion, we'll have a second main motion, which will be the appropriation of the $75,000 from Certified Free Cash. So Ms. Silva had asked me and Ms. Oshman how to do this, and I think it's easiest. Instead of taking division questions, we'll just take the main motion to create it, and then we'll place a second main motion under the article to fund it. Okay? So the first one would be what's printed in your warrant booklet up to the word "also" to raise and appropriate. "Also" to raise and appropriate, that'll be the second motion. So the first main motion is what's printed ends with the word "Falmouth." Ms. Silva.
Next slide, please. So here is the main motion. To see if the town will vote to create a Select Board Task Force on Workforce Sustainability for Falmouth's workforce families, which will seek solutions to the lack of affordable early education and childcare, affordable workforce housing, sustainable living wage jobs, restoration of Falmouth Hospital's birthing center, and other issues related to workforce sustainability in Falmouth, or take any other actions related thereto. That's the motion we are going to be working on. A couple of comments. We're in a crisis, and this article is meant to make our community aware of the level of that crisis and what we as a community can do about it. This article again has the two parts, so we'll take each part separately. Next slide, please. Why do we need a workforce sustainability task force? Our Falmouth way of life is unsustainable because our workforce is disappearing. And I have a little formula there. An aging population plus low-wage seasonal jobs equals a labor force in crisis, a housing affordability crisis, a childcare affordability crisis. And this crisis is in the news on the Cape every day, in the Cape Cod Times, the Falmouth Enterprise, and everywhere else. Next slide, please. As shown in this slide, our population has aged dramatically between 2001 and 2016, with a majority of residents either no longer in the workforce or nearing retirement. Young working adults ages 20 to 55 are in decline as the number of elder workers and retirees increases dramatically. So the light blue are the elders, the dark blue is the youngers. Next slide, please. As evident in this slide, these largest and fastest-growing economic sectors on the Cape and Islands include healthcare support, food service, building maintenance, landscaping, and transportation industries, which rely on thousands of low-wage workers. This is our dominant industrial base on the Cape and Islands, as we all know. And look at the wages. They are unlivable. People cannot live on these wages. Next slide, please. This slide shows what are the fastest-growing jobs on the Cape and Islands. And even, again, these are net increases by 2024. Healthcare and social assistance, including hospitals, nursing and residence facilities for elders, they anticipate they're going to grow by almost 17% between now and 2024. Other sectors are not going to grow quite so fast, but they're all these sectors that pay low wages. Next slide, please. As shown in this slide, even what are designated officially as living wages cannot support Falmouth's working families. As housing and childcare become more affordable, Falmouth has become a very unattractive place to live for workforce families. And who are these? These are my kids and some of your children. They can't live here, and they know it, and it's troubling. Next slide, please. Falmouth's working families face extremely high housing, maintenance, and childcare costs. And as shown in this slide, the two biggest costs for workforce families are housing and childcare. Just this week, a Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund Working Group presented eight new proposals to create funds for workforce housing, which is desperately needed for workforce families. But in many families, childcare costs more than mortgage or rent payments, an unsustainable way of life. Slide 10, please. So here's the bottom line. Falmouth's workforce families cannot afford to live in our town. Housing is too expensive, wages are too low, childcare and housing are the biggest household expenses for working families, and they're unaffordable. And our Falmouth Birthing Center was closed at Falmouth Hospital, another assault on the well-being of working families. Next slide, please. Jordan Fry, who was quoted by Troy Clarkson in his column this past week, was working with me on this particular proposal. And these are some comments that she made. And I know there's a lot of text on this, but I'll just read the last paragraph. "I'm asking of you to give us your support in forming a task force that would directly address and tackle the issues of class discrepancy here at Falmouth. What to do about housing? Where's the childcare we need? How come no one is giving birth here? Can we actually live on what we're making? How do we keep our community thriving, vibrant, and whole? How to create a life here that is sustainable, not just to those who can buy it, but to those who were born here, have grown up here, live here, work here, and hopefully will die here?" Next slide, please. So we must, what must Falmouth do to sustain our workforce? Again, this is the question that the task force would address with respect to action plans about providing affordable childcare, zoning changes, tax changes suggested to create more workforce housing, partnerships with the 300 Committee, business community, the Falmouth Affordable Housing Committees and others, Falmouth Hospital to get that birthing center reopened, and our commitments to find solutions and to support our workforce and to support living wages. So this is the proposal that you have before you as part one of this article. Thank you.
Okay, discussion on the main motion, creation of the task force. Ms. Leonardi.
Sandra, I really want to thank you for bringing this article before us. It's a long time coming, and I'm in full support of this first part of the article especially. Years ago, between the birth of my two children, I was part of the Cape Cod Commission Task Force that took young professionals from Falmouth, many of us sons and daughters of Falmouth residents, the next generation, some of us third, fourth generation, to meet with them Cape-wide about the issues that the peninsula was having. We knew at that point that this was an issue, and it was going to continue to become an issue, and we had to act on things. And I learned a lot from that commission, including that the main jobs, as you said, are these lower-paying jobs. These are the workers. All you have to do is look around this community and around the Cape and see help wanted in almost every single business in town. We have businesses closing in the height of the summer because they cannot staff it. And that's not only because of the lower-paying jobs, the high cost of living, but it does affect childcare. As a mother of two children, I can tell you, and in tune with a lot of the families in this community, the childcare waitlist for our lower families in this population, it's years, years. And the only way for many of those families to circumvent that is through the help of social services, DCF, anything like that. Then they can hop the line. And even then, it is years. There are childcare facilities that close. The pandemic made this much worse. Before, we might have had a little time. We don't have time to act on this anymore.
Indeed.
We are losing these people. You are losing a huge amount of families. People who took advantage during the pandemic, they are not going to keep locating here. I believe the average cost of houses on the Cape is now over half a million dollars.
Yes.
Half a million dollars. So let's go back to what these low-paying jobs actually pay. With childcare on the low end costing $13,000 minimum a year and a very little bit of that being refundable, and then rents, which we don't even have rental properties really anymore, right? People making those lowest-paying jobs, those families making between $30,000 and $50,000 a year, cannot afford childcare. And a lot of times, even at $30,000, $50,000 gross, they don't qualify for stipends.
That's right.
We need these people. Look around at what has gone on already this summer. Businesses closing, they can't find help, we have nowhere to house your young families. The school population is decreasing. We know that. We've been following the school committee stuff. We've talked about this. Eventually, we're going to talk consolidation. We need to do something about this. I 100% support creating a community task force for this reason, to address these issues and to bring something before the Board of Selectmen and this community and town meeting to find answers to a problem that we've known about for more than a decade. It is time to act on it and come up with solutions and do it quickly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Lowe.
Very much.
Ms. Lowe.
Call the question.
We've only had one speaker. It's a little premature. Any other speakers on the first main motion? All right. The question will come on the first motion, which is just to create the task force. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Speaker of the chair is that the ayes have it by a majority.
Thank you.
And the second motion will be to raise...
Yes.
Actually, to transfer from Certified Free Cash would be the motion.
Excuse me?
To transfer from Certified Free Cash, the sum of $75,000.
Do we have enough Certified Free Cash? Did you tell us how much we have?
We got enough of that. For the purposes of funding a family early education and care support voucher program. So it's the second half of what's written in there, replacing available funds with Certified Free Cash.
Shall I read the motion?
Or did you just read it?
I can't understand it.
Okay.
What's yours?
The second half of what's printed in the warrant booklet is the main motion, except for it's from, should be from Certified Free Cash.
Yes.
Okay.
And here is the second motion. "To see if the town will raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds the sum of $75,000 for the purposes of funding a family early education and childcare support voucher program for Falmouth residents and people who work in Falmouth, for families facing crisis in paying for early education and childcare, or take any other action related thereto." And as our previous speaker just mentioned, I'm not going to talk much about the voucher program, but the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has an early education and care department that provides vouchers to low-income families. When I researched this issue a few months ago, there were 20,000 people on the voucher waitlist. 20,000 families waiting for funds so they could afford childcare. This is an unsustainable program in and of itself. Next slide, please. This, you've already seen, but I just wanted to point out again that childcare is higher for many families than is rent or a mortgage payment. As you can see, this is a single family, one adult with two children. Childcare for two children ages infant and three years old would cost a family over $31,000 a year for childcare, if you can find it. Rent, housing might be $18,000 or so. Next slide, please. Next to housing, childcare is the largest expense for families. How much does it cost in Massachusetts? Again, Massachusetts childcare on average is the second most expensive in the nation. And we rank 42nd among states and the District of Columbia in preschool spending, preschool ages three to five, and invest even less in infant care, which costs substantially more. This is another unsustainable set of statistics for our working families. Next slide, please. Falmouth currently has some funding for childcare, but it's woefully inadequate. Approximately 60 seats of half-day programming for three- and four-year-olds, pre-K is what we call that. And parents have to pay for this half-day program, but who do you know who works a half a day? You have to work full-time, so you have to pay someone else to take care of your children for the rest of the day. Falmouth also has an outmigration fund, which has $20,000 that it allocates for childcare through the YMCA in Falmouth. And as I mentioned, the mass voucher program, which is means-tested, so if you make too much, you are instantly out of the voucher program if your income increases slightly. And very low-income families have to pay co-payments as well, which many of them cannot afford. Next slide, please. What other Cape towns are doing is shown on this particular slide. Business, members of the business community have stepped forward on the Cape. Organizations Eastern Bank and Cape Air both subsidize childcare for their workforce. And the business community has to do a lot more. We talked about pre-K and pre-pre-K, so three- and four-year-olds in other towns, Bourne, Brewster, Chatham, Eastham, Mashpee, Province Town, West Yarmouth, Truro. They all have pre-K and pre-pre-K, which is, they are much larger programs than what we have. Most of these towns have universal pre-K, so all four-year-olds go to pre-kindergarten. Truro just passed a program just this week, last Saturday, at their town meeting, $7,500 for every two-year-old in the town of Truro was allocated through town meeting to pay for early education and childcare. Falmouth again has the half-day tuition-based programs for three- and four-year-olds and the $20,000 outmigration fund. Other towns actually have cash subsidies and voucher programs, including Province Town, Truro, Wellfleet, Eastham, and Chatham. Next slide, please. And the voucher program in Chatham is of particular interest... And the voucher program in Chatham is of particular interest. I hate to tell you, but they have $200,000 in their voucher program. And I know they're pretty wealthy, but I think we are too. They have a very extensive, uh, program already up and running with an application form, eligibility criteria, vetting of providers. I talked with the executive director at Mon Moi Community Services that runs the Chatham program. She is available to help Falmouth implement a program. And I have all of these materials available for anybody to look at to see how a program like this would be run, where we had $75,000 that we would make the decisions on who would get how much. And it's not a lot. It will not help every family in Falmouth. Next slide, please. This is just more of their program, some of the literature that they, um, have. Next slide, please. Childcare subsidies, especially long-term help like a va, a voucher program, can really help working families because it raises their income immediately. And they are not necessarily, they're not, um, thrown off the program because the person gets a 10-cent raise per hour and suddenly has a slightly higher income. So voucher programs can be forms of economic stability for lower-income working families. Next slide, please. I think that's it. Yeah, thanks.
Okay, Sandy, the clerk reminded me, we need to know whose jurisdiction the money will be spent.
Who's the petitioner?
No, whose jurisdiction the money will be spent under?
Well, under the, you mean, what agency or?
Yeah, what part of the town will be responsible for the money if we appropriate it, to spend it?
Well, we had thought that Falmouth Human Services might be able to manage a fund like this, but at meetings, they seem to not have the capability of managing a fund like this, even though they do man, they do seem to have oversight over the $20,000 fund. Or the town can contract with an agency like Mon Moi Community Services.
I just need, for the motion, we need to have, it'll be spent under the jurisdiction of the town manager?
The Board of Selectmen.
Board of Selectmen.
Or the town manager.
Okay.
Would be good, too.
So make a choice.
Take your pick.
No, you take the pick. It's your motion.
I, I trust the town manager.
Okay. So under the jurisdiction of the town manager. Okay, Mr. Schwegel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. I thought it was important that the Finance Committee explain the reasons why we recommend an indefinite postponement. The, the petitioner did a wonderful, wonderful job of a presentation to us. It was textbook, and we found that it was very informational and definitely probably laid out that there was a problem that needed to be looked at. But the money was being asked for, the $75,000, before there was the need identified. That's not the way the budgeting is done. There's a need identified first, and then they decide the money that is, that should be put towards that. Another thing that was happening was they were expanding the eligibility requirements, and that's why you see more people are in need of this money. Subsequent to that, the Finance Committee learned that, under the American Rescue Plan Act, $1.9 trillion will be provided for a tax credit, community development block grants, to assist families for early education and childcare. In fact, today is, was identified by the Biden Administration as Child Tax Credit Awareness Day. Over 39 million households will benefit from the tax credit. Households will begin receiving, excuse me, in July, monthly checks of up to $300 per child under six-years-old and $250 per child between six and 18-years-old. This is a tax credit that you don't wait till the end of the year. You get this immediately every month in your bank account, or a check, or in a debit card. The people that will be covered with, with this is up, incomes up to $150,000. In fact, two earner households earning up to $400,000 will still receive periodic payments up to $2,000 per child. The Biden Administration has called for Congress to extend the program through 2025. In addition to the tax credits, $23 billion will be put in for grants to support childcare, and $15 billion in community development block grants, supporting emergency childcare, Head Start, and early Head Start. I think there's money to be had here, and the families will be helped. And I think we need to let this start working before we spend the $75,000, which we may not, is a piddly amount compared to what's coming down the, uh, down the track here soon. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Neto.
Joe Neto, Precinct 9. This becomes a sticky point of doing something good. I wholeheartedly support the original article. I voted for it. But as Chairman of the Finance Committee, just gave you a bunch of facts and figures. I have some that I'd like some answers to. First of all, we've created a task force to look into something. My first question is, if we giving this task, who do we give the $75,000 to? As town meeting members, we have an obligation to the taxpayers of the town of Falmouth that we are spending their money correctly. I'm not a ge, I don't think $75,000 is enough money. And, and Mr., well, Mr. Moderator, the way this is written, this would be a one-time, because we're going to give it from Certified Free Cash, they could spend it before June 30th, but we don't have a committee. And my next question is, because the funding source hasn't been well thought of, as of July 1st, there is no money available, correct?
No, this, this is not in the operating budget. This is the appropriation under an independent article.
Well, where's the funding going to come for this, for July 1st, for this committee to, to have it replenished and fund?
So they would have $75,000 until they spent it under the article authorization, and then whatever system they create, they can ask for more money?
Well, wouldn't it be better if this becomes a line item in the town's budget? I think what we should do is wait for the task force to come back. We know where the needs are, and I'll be the first to tell you that the $75,000 isn't going to be enough, but let's do it correctly. Let's do it the right way. Get this thing started. Mr. Schwegel just told you that the federal government is providing some funds for this operation, and hopefully by November, by the November town meeting, um, you know, we would have the mechanism to fund this, to operate this correctly. I'm not speaking against the need. I'm speaking against our job to make sure the taxpayers' funds are spent correctly. So I don't want to defeat the $75,000, but I just don't think tonight we're doing this the correct way. Our heart is in the right place, but we got to put this in the right place. That's, it's very confusing, and I don't like being confused.
Ms. Swain.
Sandra, I applaud your presenting this to town meeting. I, before I was at the Service Center, coordinated a grant through Department of Education that the lead agent was the school district here in Falmouth. And parts of that grant still exist. It's a Family Network grant. But the implementation many years ago was for vouchers to be available to families who were low-income but above the voucher limit, so that there were so many people who couldn't afford childcare but weren't eligible for that lowest-wage income. So that totally went away, and all of those people have no resources. So not only are the lowest-wage earners not having enough childcare and years of waiting lists, but those people who are earning just a little bit more have no support or help because that voucher money was taken away. So I applaud this, but I actually agree with Joe Neto. I think that this task force needs to meet, talk about this, look at existing resources. You've done a good start on that. And Chatham and Harwich, there are other communities that have created additional voucher programs. So I think you'll find that if you look a little further and work with this task force, we could create something that would really be helpful, and I encourage you to do that.
Okay, Ms. Cuny.
Sandra Cuny, Precinct 2. I do support the task force. I do not support just taking $75,000 and not knowing where it's, what committee, what group is going to oversee it, and I really think that needs homework. I'd like to see that come back. There is a need. We all know there's a need, and we want to help, but I think we need to bring something back that we can actually vote on. Thank you.
Mr. Cook. Peter? No? Okay. Ms. Peterson? Okay, call the question. I'll do it from the chair. All those in favor of funding from Certified Free Cash, $75,000 under the jurisdiction of the town manager, signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. Pinned the chairs that the noes have it by a majority. Article 19, the Vice Chair of the Community Preservation Committee for the main motion.
Let me take this off. Well, that feels good. Paul Glenn, Precinct 1. I'm here for the CPC tonight. Russ Robbins can't make it. And Article 19, I move, Ms. Moderator, I move Article 19 as recommended.
As recommended, is to appropriate the sum of $250,000 from the fiscal year '22 community preservation estimated revenues to rehabilitate Bell Tower tennis courts located at One Bell Tower Lane. Who, who held that one? In the back? Ms. Welsh?
Kelly Welch, Precinct 2. I'm speaking as a town meeting member, not as a member of the school committee. So I have two questions for the CPC about this article. The first is, does the 25-year lifespan for this refurbishment take into account not a daily, but certainly at least a yearly flooding of saltwater? And, you know, basically, can the metal, the pavement, the nets, the fencing, can it all withstand the damage that, that saltwater will do to it? And the reason that I'm asking is because we had, I think it was maybe a year ago now, the Woods Hole Group put together their vulnerability study and looked at all of the town assets, and one of those assets that they looked at was recreation. And out of all the recreational assets that the town has, this tennis court ranked the second-most vulnerable of all recreation items, and it's only beat out by the ballfield that is also at Taft Playground. It's, it is so far, it is so much more vulnerable than the rest of the assets in town that its, its ranking was 2,667, and the next highest ranking for being vulnerable outside of Taft Playground is only 870. So we know that this area is going to be inundated by floodwater, and I'd like to know that what we're putting in there is going to be able to withstand that saltwater. Is it warranted to withstand that saltwater? And then my second question is that that vulnerability report also calls for us to start looking to relocate the things that are at Taft Playground, including the ballfield and the tennis courts. So is this the best use of $200,000, or should we instead be, are we really sure that we want to spend this money this way, instead of starting to look for someplace else to put these vulnerable assets someplace that is not as vulnerable? So two questions.
Mr. Alonick.
Thank you, Kelly. It's a good question. Joe Alonick, Recreation Director. To answer one of the questions right away, the courts are guaranteed for 25 years. As far as the saltwater on the poles and stuff like that, I do not know that as a fact, but the surface is guaranteed for 25 years. I have spoken with Elise Ladue from the Woods Hole Group. The courts are due to flood in 2070. So we're still going to get 25 years of the court regardless of when the floods come, but she guaranteed me that it was 2070 for the flood, for the courts.
Can we get the other mic?
Thanks. So, so the 2070 number is when it floods twice a day, every day at the high tide. So my concern is that long before that, any storm, any spring high tide, they're going to be underwater, and I just want to make sure that we're spending smart money. So I don't know if you have any answer to that.
Nope. Again, as far as the, the storm surges and stuff, you know, daily, weekly, monthly, that is not a guarantee that we know as of yet. She did say it would not be underwater till 2070. Baseball field closer to 2050, but she said the courts would be pretty much safe till 2070.
Can I get the other mic over here on my right? All the way here in the front row on the right?
Thank you. I'm Charlie McCaffrey, Precinct 5. What was just mentioned is all a very accurate description of the coastal resilience studies that were conducted. Right, 2070, it would be underwater. It could be underwater all day, every day, or at least it would be in the intertidal zone. But that's far enough that it still can be used. However, the rate of flooding will continue to increase. Right now, the projection is that could, we could expect it to flood at least every other year. But you have to project it will increase gradually from that rate till it's completely underwater from sea level rise. So there is the potential for some use for life. I think we just need, we need to be aware that we're taking risk. Is the risk worth it? Can it be designed to minimize the effect of the saltwater? So it's a question. 25 years, 20 years would probably still make it worth it. I don't know. That's a, something that I think the town and meeting has to make a judgment on. There is risk, but it is somewhat distant.
On the far right?
Michael Stone, Precinct 6. Also the financial officer of the Community Preservation Committee. Also the financial officer of the Community Preservation Committee. Two of the primary factors in approving funding for this through the committee were, one, the state of disrepair of the courts itself just from overuse and from the many, many decades that it hadn't received attention. One of the second primary factors is the significant demand for use of courts of this nature in Falmouth. There are hundreds of pickleball players and tennis players that use these courts. And there is a significant public comment in support of these courts. The construction materials and approach for this particular project will be similar to that of the Lawrence School project. And it's all the industry standard post-tension concrete that will last and should last decades. We did not specifically consider sea level rises in our decision, but obviously that is something that will become more and more important over time and that's recognized. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Netto?
There's very little public land in Woods Hole to look at another site. And when that site hasn't changed since I played Little League baseball there in the 50s. And when that site is underwater, you won't be driving down Surf Drive on Monarch Road and you won't be able to get to your town hall because that's going to be underwater too. So we got a lot more things going underwater than just that tennis court. Let me tell you that.
Sandra Cuny, Precinct 2. I'm a member of the Community Preservation Committee after my step-down year back on and Recreation Committee. I would hope you would support this. 2070 is a long way away. And we need those courts and people use them all the time. So please, please support this. Thank you.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The shares that the ayes have it by the majority. Article 20, the vice chairman of the CPC for the main motion.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Glenn, Precinct 1. I move that Article 20, I move Article 20 as recommended.
As recommended, this is vote to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from fiscal '22 community preservation estimated revenues to purchase a permanent conservation restriction on the land now owned by the 300 Committee Land Trust and formerly owned by Florence Sylvia on Millstone Road in North Falmouth. Discussion on Article 20. Nope.
Get the mask off, it's stuck. Okay. Joel May, Precinct 9. My question comes, when I get my little yellow book, well, green in November, I visit all the properties that are in the book and look at them. When I got to this property, I saw a sign saying, "This land is permanently conserved, 300 Committee." And I was like, well, it seems like it's already done. So now there's this transfer of $200,000. There's this transfer of $200,000. My question is, okay, the town's going to transfer $200,000 to whom? How does this purchase of this permanent conservation, what is the process?
Mr. Duffy, do you want to? Okay, or CPC? Want to talk about how you, Jessica? Explain how the conservation restriction works.
Good evening, Jessica Rittenhour. I'm the executive director of the 300 Committee Land Trust and I'm a resident of Precinct 9. Mark Caspersek is here with me from the Falmouth Conservation Department. To address the question, yes, the 300 Committee has taken title to this property. Part of the overall financing plan and part of the permanent conservation plan is a conservation restriction. That's the subject of this article. So the $200,000 community preservation grant would be a purchase of a conservation restriction. As listed in the warrant, the select board would be authorized to make that purchase. The Conservation Commission would actually hold the conservation restriction. This is a model that has been used for land acquisition with community preservation funding since the beginning of the Community Preservation Act in Falmouth in 2005. Just in brief, the T-Ticket Park acquisition, the town acquired a conservation restriction with community preservation funds. Shallow Pond Woodlands, which is a 70-acre parcel, that was financed privately and with a CPC grant for a conservation restriction. The reason why we do this, it's a way of leveraging private and public funding. So for this particular Florence Sylvia Woodland project, $450,000 is being raised privately by the 300 Committee Land Trust. We are within $31,000 of the private goal. This $200,000 is an essential part of the overall financing plan. We have three years to pay the landowner. So the sign, the language, "Permanently conserved," the land is not permanently conserved until the conservation restriction goes on it. That is the intent. We certainly hope you'll approve this article tonight. It's a very important part of the three-year financing for this resource, which will have public access. There's a parking area, there's a trail, wonderful pine oak woodland, and there's actually very limited, permanently protected open space in North Falmouth. So it adds important conservation land to that area of town. And we do seek to work in all parts of Falmouth.
Any further discussion on Article 20? He's asking about the transfer of the actual appropriation in order to get the restriction.
The town of Falmouth, if this article is approved, the town of Falmouth would transfer $200,000 to the 300 Committee Land Trust. That money would be utilized by the 300 Committee Land Trust to finance this land transaction. I hope that answers your question. Great.
Okay.
I just want to say I'm in support of this article, especially since, as Jessica just pointed out, there's lower amounts of conservation land in North Falmouth and it's the lead parent for the Falmouth Outdoor Learning Project. And the progress that we are going to be looking at making in partnership with the 300 Committee and our other community partners, I believe this would be a vital asset for the North Falmouth Elementary School and the community.
Any further discussion on Article 20? Mr. Donald? With a microphone, please. Can I get a microphone for Mr. Donald, please?
Malcolm Donald, Precinct 6. I don't understand why, if the 300 Committee owns it now, why, I don't understand what the $200,000 goes for.
You need to record the conservation restriction. Go ahead. Yep. It's not quite 11 if that's what you're going to, yeah, we're close.
The 300 Committee has taken title to the property. Jerry Sylvia is the former owner. He's actually given us a mortgage. So we do not yet own this property free and clear. That's a very important point. So when I mentioned in the first answer, there is a financing plan, there's a three-year payment plan. This $200,000 would be part of a $650,000 total purchase price to be paid to Mr. Sylvia over a three-year timeframe. So as I mentioned, the conservation restriction $200,000 grant fits into a $650,000 budget. The 300 Committee is on the hook for this money. If we can't raise it through a CPC grant, we go out and we raise it privately. So what we are hoping for is to match the $450,000 that we've committed to raising privately with this $200,000 grant so that we can complete this as a public-private conservation partnership.
Okay, the question will come on the main motion as recommended. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. The ayes have it unanimous. Chair Luntina, motion to dissolve the town meeting. So moved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, no. This meeting is dissolved.
Greetings from the new simply hearing. Like everyone, we've made a lot of changes.
We've always loved telling you about the teamwork and rapport that you find here, but now, for the sake of medical safety, we offer four types of services by appointment only. There's lots to be happy about with a new, more precise appointment plan made just for your needs. We also have a new, more transparent pricing structure.
Welcome to the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce. The Falmouth Chamber is dedicated to working on behalf of our members to make Falmouth a better place to live, work, and conduct business. We are committed to developing the economic, cultural, educational, and civic interests of our community and welcome the support from all organizations to achieve our combined goals. Whether you call Falmouth home, are a summer resident, or a visitor, we hope you take advantage of all that the Chamber has to offer.
Hi, I'm Bob from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, as a family-owned company, our goal has been simple, to give our neighbors of the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick out the perfect appliances. We'll take care of everything throughout the sale, delivery, and installation process. And we even have our own in-house service department. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing for all your printing needs. 508-548-7303 or toll-free at 1-800-696-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@aul.com. Carlson Printing for all your printing needs.
Hosting services for FCTV.org are provided by Meganet Communications. Meganet offers a wide array of internet services, including mega-backup cloud service, server colocation, T1, fiber, metro ethernet, as well as telephone services such as hosted PBX and digital voice. Their number one goal is to keep your communications network up and running and allow you to focus on growing your business.
Additional funding and support provided by the following corporate sponsors. The attorneys at Oppenheim and Nickerson LLP have provided legal services in Falmouth for over 36 years. We advocate for our clients and work to provide quality representation in the areas of business and corporate law, real estate law, estate planning, and estate administration.
Barrett Plumbing and Heating offers expert plumbing, heating, and air conditioning services to all our residential and commercial customers on Cape Cod and surrounding area. We are a full-service plumbing specialist offering professional workmanship to suit your budget. Whatever your heating or plumbing need, you can always count on a job that's done right.
Seven Stars Academy, offering martial arts and Tai Chi. Training at Seven Stars Academy can transform your life. It's amazing to see the positive impact it has in our students. Classes for adults and children of all ages. Confidence, not conflict, at Seven Stars Academy of Martial Arts.
Hamilton Tree and Landscape has been proudly serving Falmouth and the Upper Cape since 1978. Our newest location on Route 151 is now open for all landscaping and tree concerns. Appreciating your property is our motto as we continue to keep your tree and landscaping needs our top priority.
At ANA Paving, we believe in providing customers quality products supported by excellent service. We provide commercial and residential seal coating, asphalt paving, and repair services for Cape Cod and southeastern Mass. ANA Paving, 508-540-4944.
Calfee Insurance, offering insurance policies for your car, home, business, life, and disability. Calfee cares about all your insurance needs. 508-540-2601 and online at calfeeinsurance.com.
Thomas J. Bunker and Jeffrey E. Reither are BSS Design, providing land surveying and civil engineering in Falmouth since 1987. Licensed and fully insured, they're located on Catherine Lee Bates Road and their phone number is 540-8805.
Liam McGuire's Irish Pub. With a newly renovated dining room, it's what an Irish pub should be. Main Street, downtown Falmouth.
Eastmans has been Falmouth's hardware store since 1913. With a newly added retail space providing kitchen accessory and gourmet foods, our friendly staff is available to assist you with your hardware and kitchen needs.
Carpet Barn, Carpet One Home Showcase, a local family-owned business offering all your premier carpet and flooring needs. They also feature tile and vinyl floors, area rugs, window treatments, and kitchen and bathroom cabinetry, serving you at four convenient locations.
FCTV is also supported by the following businesses and organizations. Grassi Septic Solutions, 508-548-7500. Whole Health Company LLC, 484-888-8202. J. Miller Pictureframer, 681 Falmouth Road, 508-539-3888. The Annie Hart Cool Team, 508-868-0664. Dolpi Septic Plumbing, residential, commercial pumping and cleaning, 508-548-5488. Village Lamp and Repair Shop, 508-274-2057. Nobbska Lighthouse and Maritime Museum, friendsofnobbska.org. Lisa Peterson Azendorf, Kinlan Grover Real Estate, 508-566-6259. Partners Technology, Voice and Data Solutions, 781-930-5000.